And to get started here, call order and roll. Tonight we have Kayla Anderson.
So it's going to be something like this on them?
It's one. Jeremy Fannin, Josh. Rachel Marshall Schoenfelder, Teresa Bjornstad, and Ryan Easter. Do I have anyone that approves the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Ms. Schoenfelder. You have a second?
Sure.
Seconded by Teresa Bjornstad. The motion carries. Uh, the superintendent. So basically, the things that I have is all of it now. That's just kinds of stuff we're going through. So at this point, Chair's permission. Like, see if we can move up our Jefferson Committee or Jefferson information here. Chris Heinemann from the city has stopped in and gave us a little bit of background and perhaps some support as we get into wondering if Jefferson will visit with them on Friday afternoon. Moon and Bev should say great to come back.
Thank you very much Superintendent. Good to be here. Thank you for inviting me Superintendent Joshua Japp. I think I may not be able to provide, you know, the exact answers that you were hoping for, but by participating with the City Council's annual workshop, I have some feedback from the council, but also I think we shared some of the comments that you've been gathering since probably July of last year. And I could say that there's definitely a concerted interest in partnering in some way to make sure that the results at the Jefferson School site are as positive as possible. That being said, I think at the annual workshop, council members basically voiced not an interest in acquiring the site. I think that's at least their current position based on some unknowns more than anything else. But at the same time, for this to be a successful project, I think the city could be involved in particularly making sure the zoning is possible for if it were to be a reuse project, it needs that zoning support. And then also community planning and possibly other partnerships, including with the county. And I might even just share just a little bit of a story, my own personal experience with a similar situation. My first job as a city administrator was the city of Kenyon, and I inherited an old high school building in Kenyon. It was not in the condition that I wanted it to be inherited. It was, it was, it took actually four years to resolve. And you may have heard similar stories that are, that have happened, but basically the prior school board built the Kenyon One Me School, the high school there. And in their efforts to dispose or transfer the existing facility, they partnered or they initially asked the city before I was there, the city didn't have an interest. That was a larger building than the Jefferson School, but still had potential for some sort of reuse at that time because it was maintained right up until those years. And so they instead went to an RFP and they partnered with a developer. I'm going to put air quotes around a developer because probably didn't have the experience and the expertise to take on a project to that extent. But he told a really good story and that story was to do some sort of a community center effort in particularly the gymnasium space and the theater space. And he did that for about a year. And, and then, you know, as a private building, it did have, I think he might have even been organized as a nonprofit. So I don't think tax consequences were an issue, but it was just even general operating expenses plus a small mortgage that he had taken out to do some of the minor renovations couldn't be supported. And so by the time I started in Kenyon, it was already vacated and went through the state tax forfeiture process or with going through that process. As some of you may know, that's a lengthy process. It takes basically four years. And by the time the city had any opportunity to acquire it, the roof was already gone. The gym floors were about four feet high. You could have surfed them. It was a property that was in need of demolition. And so at that time, we ended up working with Goodyear County and I think a partnership between the city and the county was how it ended up in the end. It was not, not fun for anyone. It was not a money-making venture in any way or a community building venture in any way. So I will continue to tell this story to my city council members and to our HRA and also reach out to the, to the county and see if there's some way to make this, you know, the best possible reuse opportunity. The only additional timing thing that I can add is that the city has contracted with a company called Maxfield Research to do a housing study. That is expected in April. And so as one of the very possible reuse opportunities of a school building like that, housing, multifamily housing in some way is probably one of the best reuses and it's been done in many other communities. So I think having that housing study would be helpful before making any decisions if at all possible. But at the very least, we'd certainly be interested in working with you in the development of the RFP, possibly in the reviews of the RFP, that kind of a process. I think you also heard that there's some interest in the park facility or a park in that area, but I think that has to come secondary to the primary use, not, not be the first and only desire from the city. So with that.
Do you want it zoned yet now?
It, I think public institutional, I believe. And there has been some, some history of being able to, to put multifamily in that location, but I think it would probably, I don't know. According to Community Development Director Kyle Clatt, it probably could move forward if it was just that space. But for most developers, they're going to need to do some sort of enhancement, increase, you know, develop some underground parking and possibly even some more units. And that's where you get into a need for some, some additional like planned unit development zoning. And so it can get difficult if you don't prepare for that ahead of time and, and build the expectations in the neighborhood and kind of go through that process. So.
How long does that rezoning process take?
It can take just a, you know, a few months. It's a, you know, publication and public hearings and that, that type of a process, but probably more importantly, digesting the housing study and visioning what, what would be the best, best and highest use for that site. If that's truly the desire of the council, then, then kind of proactively moving in that direction to give any developers, any interested developers comfort that it's going to be supported for that.
So it was previously sold to a developer? Did they have any zone? I mean, how would they have got it to develop if they didn't have that zoning?
Part of that, I think, was the, I mean, the zoning to just use the space, which I think was what his plan was, was probably there, but I don't think the due diligence for the, the level of cost involved was completed to, you know, based on my recollection of that process. It's a pretty significant effort and sometimes there might need to be some sort of incentives to, to make something like that happen.
Is the study, is that Red Wing as a whole or specifically that parcel?
City of Red Wing as a whole. Yep.
So.
Showing needs, demands, areas that could be conducive to, to future housing development.
And maybe again to the, the old hospital site. Did that get rezoned for residential one or is that?
I.
I'm just out of curiosity, just, just as, you know, because it is another big parcel that.
Right, exactly. I don't exactly know how the zoning process went, but it is currently the developer that that took over the site is Goodyear County Habitat for Humanity and it is platted for a single-family development. So if the zoning around that area, just, just enveloped that and the public institutional use wasn't zoned, I don't know. Or if they had to rezone it, I'm not sure. My, my level of experience in the city is a week old right now, so.
One other question going to that hospital site. Because I know that residents and everyone are really concerned, obviously, with green space.
Yes.
Does that parcel where the old hospital was, is that planned to have green space there?
I do not believe so. It's an alley configuration with, with housing on the, whichever, I'm not north and south or east and west. I don't know what the alignment is right there. I think he's, it would be, yeah, north and south probably. So that the housing faces the, the public streets and the alley in the back allows for the ingress and egress for, for local residents. That's the current plan.
From no.
Not on that site from the hospital specifically. I think the adjacent site, I'm not sure if that includes, includes that development or not, but, yeah. Anything else?
We talked before, he's got a, he's got a monthly in the VHS video too, so I think he wants about 10 minutes or so. Anything else that anybody has there at this particular point?
If and when that housing study comes in, hopefully in April, we definitely would share it with you first and foremost, but more importantly, there will at some point be a kind of a housing summit. That's, that's the plan for the revenue board authority to kind of host that and hold that. That may take some planning, might be a month or two after that, but I'm envisioning that that would be likely late, late spring, early summer timeframe as well. So I'm not saying hold off on what you need to do as a, as a school board, but the, the additional opportunity to help might come with some of that additional information coming forward.
Do you understand the results of the study? Like what, what thresholds there are where are you making a decision to move forward with it?
All to be determined. I think it's, yeah, we don't know the content of the study as what, as far as, I mean, it's going to show demographic information. It's going to be, it's, it's really the kind of information. In fact, Superintendent was interviewed as part of that process early on, so I think it'll be very informational and very helpful for the school board as well.
Well, thank you very much for taking time for us.
My pleasure. My pleasure. Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks.
Go back up number one, the plans.
You want me to start out? So we're in the process of reviewing our numbers with regard to the revenue expectations and the expenditure expectations. There is a February information for enrollment that has come out since the time we did the revised budget. So we're taking a look at that because when you look at the February enrollment, that can reflect more of the second quarter and that can change for a district. So we're reviewing that at the moment. They just put out last week the newest revenue projection model from Minnesota Department of Ed. So we, I've downloaded that and I have basically restarted transferring my information into that to make sure that nothing's shifting too much. They have also notified us of a change in the, the calculated amount for the fiscal year 26 gen ed formula per student. So that did increase by $200 from the current year. And that's a little bit higher, just a little bit higher than what we were projecting otherwise. I do anticipate that the revenues, similar to what we looked at before, will be very, very much the same as what we talked about on the expenditure side. We are taking some changes to the assumptions. So things that are not salary related, we are using the assumption of no increase. So supplies, materials. In other words, the budget that you have is what you then have to kind of make work, stretch that further, right? So with those changes, then that is going to assist us in reaching a more palatable number. However, I think at this point, we're really needing to hear from the board, the, the amount of dollars that may be considered acceptable for use by the fund balance. Our current fund balance policy allows for us to determine an amount. It actually says that you can, I think it's commit, but I could be wrong. The fund balance that is necessary to, to cover the next year's projected fund balance deficit. Does that make sense? So given that, that is something that we would need to know and understand before we can really bring forward exactly what you're looking for. In the end, we do need to finalize our class sizes because that is the, the next final step here for us is to identify what those class sizes will be by grade. And then from there calculate the FTEs that each of the different levels based on the enrollment numbers that we use to project forward. So also since we last talked, I have received new models from Ellers Incorporated, which is our financial advisors, and they have a budget model process as well as a projection model. And it does take into consideration various different methods. It can be used in calculating and estimating what your numbers are going forward. It kind of solidifies where we thought we were going to be for projecting in '26, but it's another support in that it's not, sometimes you just want to run the numbers a couple different ways to make sure that, that they're all coming out the way you would expect. And so that is also in the process of, of being finalized with training in full as, as well, so.
As we were visiting and through everything, when we initially ran, you think before we came up with a number of $3 million deficit for next year. Since then, we have adjusted some of our assumptions within there. So lowered some of the expected expenditures, a certain amount that we think we're still pretty comfortable with. Nevertheless, we're still probably looking at a 1.5, perhaps $2 million deficit depending upon how things go. There's a whole bunch of things that are totally up in the air in the legislature right now, and that is really throwing keep and stuff. There's talks about things like a compensatory revenue. Sort of compensatory revenue, the law changed under the current model or has, under the current law, I think it was $385,000 that we will not receive in compensatory revenue next year. There's hope that there's going to be a whole harmless for that, but every single time something happens that the legislature goes, goes wind shift. So we're trying to protect, you know, be cautious as we go through. So we're still trying to figure out exactly what that's, you know, what. There's other pieces at federal level that are very uncertain of what's going on and pick where related pilot funds. So all of those things, I got to feed into the budget. So you got all those unknowns and then you never have an exact known on your enrollment either. So all those pieces make this a really challenging budget cycle. What you don't want to end up doing is overcutting and, you know, overshooting your mark and then you end up where you're not supporting students for the best that you need. On the other hand, risk is with that you undershoot and then all of a sudden you have a deficit that was greater than was anticipated. So it's my understanding that in the budget cycle last year, the board had a pretty firm position that they didn't want to utilize anything of the fund balance in order to kind of soften that goal. So for Lisa and I, one of the things that we kind of determined is does the board have any interest in allowing the use of some of the fund balance that we have? Now, it's not a deal like if we had a $2 million deficit, we cannot use $2 million out of the fund. So that would be irresponsible to do that. If we end up with, let's say we end up with, we project a million and a half dollars as a deficit, okay? Would the board be comfortable in allowing us $500,000 out of the fund balance? It's still leading to a million dollars in cuts. That's a hypothetical. That's not a for sure, but it's something that needs to be considered. So we kind of need to have some direction on the board's comfort level for allowing us to use a little bit of the fund balance. Last year, there was projected to be a deficit. We were fortunate with things ended up for a, ended up with a million dollar surplus at the end of last fiscal year. This year, initially, we were projecting a deficit. It looks like we're going to end up with at least a small surplus there. Don't know exactly what those dollars are going to be, but it could be, I guess, 300 to 500 thousand dollars probably. So we got a, that's been good, but we don't want to do, like I say, this kind of, got to be cautious all the way through. I guess that's where the discussion kind of begins.
I have a couple of questions. So when you say we had a million dollar surplus, where did that go?
Into the fund balance.
Just the general fund balance? None of that got put into the, and then I think it depends what, how much is in that? I got the wizard.
Sorry, just.
Thank you, yeah. And then isn't there a percent that is recommended to maintain? I'd like to know what that is for us before we make that decision.
Yeah, I could look at the fund balance policy quick.
Is that right? Minimum fund balance should be reviewed.
There's a recommendation.
Yeah, there's a recommendation. Typically a percentage.
Oh, about your expenses.
There's a state recommendation and a board policy that offers their own recommendation. It's a state requirement, a board requirement, not higher than that. Do we understand the biggest potential for sugar to having a, not having a deficit? What would, what outcome, so would these student enrollments that are?
So you're talking about the current year or you're talking about next?
For '26.
So for '26, the biggest thing, the driving thing is just expenditures, you know? So cost of everything's going up, whether it's insurance, it's employees, it's all of those various pieces. And then you combine that with the unknowns that you have surrounding student enrollment. So right now, one of the things that we, we know, and this is just basic demographics. This isn't, you know, anything that's, anybody moving here, there, doing anything else. Overall, we've got about 200 seniors in the system. They might be here in the school, they might be a five R O, or they might be a college. We are projecting about 150 kindergarteners. Basically, right there, we've got 50 students lost in your overall enrollment. And that's just demographics. So then that's where, those are the numbers that we're using to project revenue.
So you're thinking it's a enrollment, that enrollment is the biggest impact?
Well, it's one of the biggest impacts, but there's, again, because we're, we're still ended up dealing with some of the impact from decisions the legislature backed in '23 that, you know, there's things on the horizon. Well, one of the things, like I said, that compensatory game. We don't know for sure if we're going to receive that $385,000 enough. That's a pretty substantial amount. So there's other pieces that go in there right now. Things like summer unemployment have been covered by the state that's going forward. Most things as of right now are not going to until they end up changing some things. Lisa, what do you think?
Yep, it's 5% in our policy. In my experience, that's a percentage I wouldn't recommend going lower than this point. Always good to have enough to cover your payroll for at least ideally two months. However, for us, $2 million, which is what 5% of our budget is, that will cover, right now, I transfer a million dollars every pay period. Okay, so that's two pay periods and that doesn't count the bills that we pay. And depending upon the week, because some, some weeks are bigger because we have transportation bill come through or G C E D or Blue Cross Blue Shield bill, right? Because those are the three biggest ones. I usually am, I'm transferring another 500,000 to cover those bills. Can be up to 700,000 in some of those weeks.
And is our current fund balance?
Our current fund balance is at around 12%, I believe it was. Let me go look.
What would you feel comfortable with?
As far as, well, so.
Do you think five, you said 5%?
That's what the policy calls for. As a minimum fund balance for unassigned, yes.
Right. And what do you feel about that, knowing what you know?
I would hope that we would not require, you know?
Yeah.
Because like, as Bob indicated.
Not next year, I'm worried about.
Beyond. Right.
That's when a lot of these big things, you know, decisions that are made in the legislature now, that's when this is going to hit. When state came out the other day with forecasts and said we've got $6 billion projected deficit in the state of Minnesota, that's, that's coming to the schools. So, you know, Lisa and I have spoke about this before. We didn't necessarily talk about the percentage of the fund balance as much as, okay, if we're projecting right now that we're going to have a small surplus, you know, like I said, could be $500,000. So the board, we want to go in allowing us to use $500,000 to soften the goal in the current fiscal year or in the next fiscal year. So the last year, the end of Miami County, that was like, oh, we're not picking in with a fund balance at all.
But that was an unexpected fund balance for that.
The million that we have?
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
And would 500,000 take us close to 5% or no? Not even close?
No, no.
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 Around, around 5 million, right?
Yes, but that mean, so there's the overall fund balance and then there's the unassigned fund balance. So there's a little bit further calculation that needs to be done to get you the unassigned fund balance. So, yeah, we're around the 12 mil, or excuse me, 12% overall.
Which is about 5 million.
12% is our unassigned fund balance?
No, I think it's a little less than that. But I can do, I can run the calcs if that's what we're interested in.
But with 5% of criteria, it's 40 million.
That's, yes, that is, the policy reads, pull it up here again.
What number policy is that?
It is 70, 714. This school district currently strives to maintain a minimum unassigned general fund balance of 5% of the annual budget. So what that means is there's categorical aids that are restricted from the state that you have to spend for those purposes. So we calculate the unassigned fund balance, we're taking that out of the mix and determining what other expenditures are there besides those funds. So it's about having to go through and make sure that we know exactly how much of those revenues we're receiving. Compensatory is one of those examples. And, you know, the thing about this is we're talking some large chunks here, like compensatory is 350,000. So, I mean, it's not something that's just a small figure and we just know we can kind of wave it one way or the other. It's like, these are chunks that are important to us and meaningful to this projection. So, and, and special education, that's taking a shift in over the last couple of years. And, you know, will they, the estimates they had initially didn't quite fund everyone 100%. So the big question is, are they going to do the appropriations bill and fund the rest of it? That's another big chunk like that, you know? So those two questions will be answered once we get through the legislative session. The question. Right, so we have to make a guess, an estimate.
Do we have an understanding of what excess for our fund balance has been over the last five, six years versus just the last two? Is this cyclical?
Yes, hang on. I'm just thinking of the right document to pull up for you. So let me see if I can find that in our.
I wonder if you have a question about if we're going to use, you know, or put on the table, taking this up in there or answer. Is that a discussion tonight?
We would like to start the discussion tonight, but we'd like to be able to come up with some answers if the board needs to. Kind of put it under radar. Think about that, what's kind of the purpose of having the workshops. We can discuss anything, but if you have questions, you know, you may come back and you go home and come and update us.
Right. I'm pulling up the executive audit summary because I believe that was where it's best shown.
You can pull that out of your office or follow it.
The audited financials. All right, so this has five-year look back. And so your unassigned fund balance is 5.7 million in '24. Previous year was 4.6 and the three years before that were 5.7 for '22, 5.35 for '21, and 3.858 for '20. I would say that '21, '22, '23 are pretty much when we had the Essar funds and those are now, after '24, now pretty much depleted. We were restricted fund balances, to give you a sense. This past year, '24, is at 500,000, where previous years were 253, 297, 338, and 257. So our restricted fund balance is up higher than it had been. So our restricted fund balance is up higher than it had been before. Some of that is the capital fund balance. And, um, so we'd be, you always want to spend that down first before others. And so we'll be working to do that. And the question though is the unassigned is what the fund balance policy actually refers to, not the other restricted funds.
Were these all about ten, twelve percent as well?
Yeah, I mean, the challenge is that expenditure total increases and it's increasing about one point seven to two million dollars each year, just increasing your expenditures. Because as we talked about, we're talking about keeping flat some of the, some of the areas, right? But you can't keep flat the salary benefit areas or the transportation area for us for next year. So given those percentage increases, you have to build those in. And that's where, every year, I'm a proponent of reviewing your budget expenditures to make sure that you are, for the cost of living increases, trying to somehow scale back so that you're not seeing that hit the fund, the fund balance as much each year, right? So every year, having some type of a process that you're going through and reviewing and making sure that the budget is as tight as can be in the particular smaller areas. Um, you can like dice it different ways and make sure that you're looking at it from different perspectives. Like, what does it look like from a, a site perspective? What does it look like from, from my perspective? Like, how are we spending the money? Like, how much of this is salary? How much of it is benefits? How much is supplies and things like that? So, um, I, I think that that's something that's a typical annual thing you should do. And so I'm always a proponent of, of reviewing that and coming up with those reductions that are necessary regardless. And always rate sizing. Rate sizing, when I say that, I'm talking about if your enrollment's going down, then you're also adjusting for the staffing that you have related to that enrollment. Um, if it were going up, likewise, right?
You'll find that the vast majority of schools across the state are dealing with.
Yes.
So do we have like a forecast of large project maintenance plan right here throughout the year?
So we've got long-term facilities maintenance plan, but within that, so that plan gets submitted in July. That's something that we're going to look at there because the nice thing about L C F M is those dollars, we can spend them, we can carry those home. They still have to be relegated to those categories and whatnot. But, you know, if, I don't know exactly, but I think there was maybe a parking lot that was on tap to be, be done. We could probably live without having to do that parking lot at this time in the matter of, you know, you can't kick everything down the road. But what you want to be doing is you want to want to do the things that are least impactful when it comes to your student body. That's kind of where your goal should always be. At the same time, you can't let the facilities fall apart around the years. But, um, look at the kids first and go from there. And then, so when we're looking at things, it's got to be everything from, you know, staff is certainly the biggest piece there, but I had a pretty good conversation with Alan Gayler about just the maintenance. What are, where are ideas that we can, um, net back on some of that stuff? So it's a big picture problem. So at the board meeting, uh, we'll be forwarding this discussion. And then hopefully we can come up with, uh, by then, we have Lisa and I another couple of weeks where we can continue to work on numbers and save them a couple of recommendations. Just that way you kind of earmarks something. Anything else for Lisa?
I'm just trying to get an idea about the panel like the cost versus required cost.
It's a good question. You've got your fixed costs that end up being your buildings and things like that because your high school building costs as much to operate, whether it's completely full or half of it. Same thing there, you know, so we had fixed costs that, well, we're not fixed, unfortunately, but like our bus costs. You know, they're jumping, uh, insurance costs, those are all going up. Um, so it's, that's where it gets the real, real challenge because there's, there's no doubt the costs are going up. Okay, and no matter what happens at the legislature, so we're going to get two hundred dollars per pupil unit next year uh, in additional aid. That is not nearly enough to just cover the costs as they increase.
Because when you talk about the delta region, two percent seniors, and you also have pupil units higher for seniors versus.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, so instead of fifty pupil units, because the high school was one point two versus one, it's actually equivalent to sixty pupil units. So that's where we build in our assumptions.
Unfortunately, a lot of districts are in a situation where they have already addressed the things that were unessential in a lot of cases and, and we're working off from, you know, what we need, right? And so it's not easy at this time.
What other districts have done to fight for this that we haven't done?
I don't think that there's anything we haven't done. I think it's just a matter of this is where we're at now. I mean, if you look back, the news for the last few years has been talking about surplus at the state level. You know, our aid and levy comes from our local and, and state information, right? Well, then we also have our federal funds that we, um, could receive and, you know, what will happen with that? All that kind of flows into this mix and there's just quite a bit of uncertainty at this point in time. So everybody's kind of reeling a little bit about this, but, I mean, we knew that the S R funds were going away. So a lot of districts did what we did, which was scale back on where you were using those funds so that they were least impactful moving forward. And, um, and we did that. So, um, this is not because of the loss of the federal S R funds. This is just, this is where we're at with our, um, decline in enrollment for, that we're projecting as well as then the, um, limited amount of increase in state aid revenue and the questions that are hanging in the air.
Well, another part of the revenue is, I mean, the Yonkers proposal was to reduce the amount of reimbursement for our specialized transportation. Okay, so we have specialized transportation in form of some buses and whatnot. Well, they're going to take five percent of that away, you know, for two dollars and for some, we still have to transport kids. So we still have those fixed costs even though we end up with reduced revenue.
Today, one hundred's a bit, lovely day with M S B A and NASA. We heard from the Senate Education Finance Committee Chairs and the House Senate Finance Committee Chairs. And they asked us, how many districts here are expecting to make some cuts next year? Probably eighty percent of the people in that room are in districts that are going to be cutting. So it's, it's us, it's not just us. And it's the pretty similar issues with declining enrollment. And last year, people were adjusting for S R, and now here we are. So we aren't, it isn't anything necessarily that we are doing wrong. It's just.
It was really.
Yep.
Well, did they talk about relief from all of the mandates that they put on about funding?
Some, some, we talked about, um, it was the, how we determine the compensatory funds with our free and reduced lunch forms and using the county numbers.
Direct certs.
Direct, yeah, direct certifications. And everybody, such as Brennan, experiences a difference. There are people who don't get county assistance but still need free and reduced lunch. So you can't equalize those numbers. And so I think that the, um, legislators are open to allowing us to use those paper forms, paper, um, in order to actually get the real number of kids who need help and that we have. For S R funds.
And that.
compensatory.
And that, that process is really the application for educational benefits. And the challenge has been that since statewide, we have the universal free meals, families don't necessarily see the importance of completing that application, even if they are and would be eligible. It still continues to be important to us because that is what is still determining the portion of the meals that we serve that is funded by federal funds. The difference falls to the state. So it is important for us to continue to push for families to complete those application forms, to get those submitted so that we do still continue to receive the federal funding that covers the cost of those meals on the food and nutrition side of things. Um, not to mention the impacts we've talked about here for the general ed fund.
You have, you have that number, the even a estimate on what, what that S R fund for the free and reduced would be. What if, if more people were, if more people were filling out the free and reduced?
So we were receiving, based on the formula, um, one point six million dollars. Now we will be, we're calculated to receive in twenty-six, one point two five five. And so that is the difference of us going from what was the direct cert that we would get from the county as well as the additional application forms compared to just now direct cert alone.
What's our opportunity if everybody was filling out?
Well, I mean, there's, there's, um, there's so many tails to this, because like even the E rate application that we were just completing for next year. I mean, that too affords us the ability to obtain certain equipment for technology at a reduced rate. And if, if it is not, um, if we lose sight of exactly what the financial need is within the communities because there's this lack of attention to capturing this information and, and collecting it, as has been in the case in the past, we would fall below the thresholds that would afford us those, those reductions. So, um, I mean, I think that there's a necessity for us to continue to push for this and to have our families. They may not see the immediate need for food nutrition, but they would then also have the ability for them to use that form for waiver of fees or things of that nature too that are available, um, that every school considers and, and usually provides for the students who can't afford certain things throughout the year.
Can I say something real quick about that? So my first year here, I knew about this forum being issued. I'm on it allies board also, and they're actually one of the policymakers that pushed for the, um, whole harmless so that the money didn't go away as a result of this, uh, state good, good act that had an unintended consequence. It's why my first year I actually held schedules and said, no, you got to come in and pick up your schedule. I had a lot of parents that just weren't used to that, but it was me to make sure people came in to get their schedules and get forms filled out. What I didn't realize and didn't fully think about was that kids would just come in by themselves without their parents. So I didn't get the forms filled out. And I did that the first year because I knew we were within like a half a percent of making a real difference and that story funding. The second year, Robin had the great idea, well, let's put picture day on the same day as back to school, because we'll get more families. And I think we had like, we had like eighty-five percent turnout that day. But we still had a really low fill out the form piece because even though we tried to do the education piece around it, I, I just think any more people talking about it, I would say it'd be really powerful for it to come from like school board members versus like educators around like the E rate and all these things that like, even though you feel like it doesn't impact you, there's actually a lot of families that qualify that think they wouldn't. And even though it's not a direct benefit, it benefits their student in the long run because it's benefiting their school. Um, and that's the part where like we've tried to do intentional acts that bring families in to complete these kind of forms. Um, but it's also like hard to get someone to be there for the whole day to like staff the form and explain it and fill it out. And then also just some of the fears that we have in our community are putting information down on those forms, right? On where they're going and what they're for. There, there's a lot more behind those forms than just a free lunch. And like, that's the, the long message that needs to get out there sometimes. But those were the two reasons why I got a lot of pushback, like, why are you withholding the schedules? We can't see them on Student View. Well, I want you to come into the building. I want you to come fill out this paperwork, come do these forms, I want to meet you. Um, that's why we did that the first year and that's why the second year, Robin came up with the idea, let's just do picture day that day. And that worked great. Um, we had eighty-five percent turnout. Again, it was mostly just the kids because they could drive. Um, but I think that, that aspect of like, how do we communicate it out better? We were, I think we were a half percent away the year before, um, when I was here of, of making a pretty significant compensatory dollar amount. And I'll tell you, I wrote it down right away when you said that, um, our supplies and materials budget costs are fixed, because I already have an issue. You're going to ask me about my course catalog here in a minute, and I'll talk about that then, so.
Do we know what percentage of brain use is included in that?
I don't have it offhand, but I can get that information and bring that back to you.
Did we use the media before to explain to people?
Well, last fall, I mean, through the whole, I mean, we talked about this at board level multiple times. Um, Justina, she had done a lot of work, uh, in the community as far as getting people to sign up. Um, so, yeah, we, we pushed it wherever we could and Robertson always had things that were worn out. So it's always had a challenge. I, I don't have a real easy answer, you know, I think, um, again, the universal meals for everybody, well-intended, definitely had some unintended consequences as far as.
I will say the only success I've had with it the best is when you do a required station. They still have to come to your table, get a stamp that they're there, to talk to them. And they can still say, no, they have a right to do that. But like, you don't make them come to the station to fill it out. Like, I think it's just too easy for people to miss it and bypass it. So just something to think about.
Yeah, we can't require it.
Yeah, you can't require it, but I think that we've done cards in the past at other schools where like they get a stamp for every station. And it's a way for them to get to know people and get information, but then they all miss it either.
I guess I'm going to put Janet Paddock on the spot. Are you guys seeing the same thing that you're?
We went as far as making a list and phone calling out, trying to get people to come and do it.
But you're still seeing a lack of people.
We don't want to, why do we need to do it?
Yeah.
It's for the greater good.
I've never seen the form as a relative of the big form.
No.
No.
It's available online.
We even sent a QR code out for it.
Because if someone, who, like, should fill it out?
Yeah. It really should be a parent. A kid should, like, our high school kids could fill it out, but like, it really shouldn't be a parent.
Well, and which families should fill it out too? I think there's some, because I was at the picture day, like, by that table, like, trying to understand who should get the form exactly to fill it out, you know? Are you, do you qualify okay, like, go fill it out? If you know you're probably not going to qualify, you still fill it out. And then you have the middle people who are just kind of left, I'm just saying, like, right or wrong, that's kind of how I felt.
Right, everybody should fill it out.
Because right away, for a lot of people, the immediate thought is, I'm not, I mean, I'm not qualified to fill it out. I'm, it doesn't make any sense for me to fill it out. Like Gosham said, you would be surprised at the number of families that do qualify despite of anything.
Right. Because it's really asking for the household income and it's asking for the number of individuals in the household. And that, that can shift for families and it can be very different, right? And so it's, um, there's a formula that's devised by the state. And unfortunately, the timing of when that's renewed for the new year is in July. And so, you know, you think, well, if it were during tax time, you could just kind of take care of it all in one kind of thing maybe. But it isn't until July that they put out the new forms and you can't fill out the old forms for next year. You'd have to refill out the new forms, so.
And you have to do it every year.
Yes, it hasn't been done every year.
Being the person collecting all those forms. And it's the same thing every year, like, we have to do it again, but you do. And really, if everybody would just do it, if we're not singular anymore.
Right.
Just something we all do.
Sure. Well, until, until July first, it's not, it's not an option.
Yes, it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily serve your purpose for next year until after July one. At which point then, what, a, a lot of times what we do is we have the QR code. All you have to do is, is, you know, that'll take you right into the online and that's pretty easy to do, regardless of any language challenges too, because they provide that in multiple languages.
And I think people would be more comfortable a lot of times filling that out online instead of their.
Well, you're at the kitchen table.
Yeah, I've never seen the QR code that I, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Is that something that could go out like with our elementary people with their teacher letter? Have a QR code on that teacher letter? I mean, that would get a bunch of kids. And then middle school includes. And then middle school include that with the schedule so parents can fill it out. And the high school, same thing.
Well, we already booked picture day again for next year on our last day. So we know that works. We'll get them back in the building.
So that's one of those deals. It's an ongoing effort to try to get that figured out. And again, this is just one.
Right, one thing, but it's a single thing. It is.
Just keep it on there.
Every week.
And then say, well, just a reminder, if you haven't done this for the year, please do one.
And it is.
You could publish like, we're still at sixty percent.
It is on the website, um, very clearly under the food nutrition department where, um, people can fill that out. But again, we're, we're up against that, I don't need to worry about it for my child's meals, right? And so that's where we just need to kind of push for everyone to just go there, fill it out. One thought might be to move it, place it on the main page.
Right.
It's hard to get to the food. It's hard to find, to be honest.
Okay.
So it's tied to, I think, science, others.
Oh, there's, so, yeah, I mean, it's.
Can you fix that up just for you?
No, I mean, just, you might qualify for reduced activity fees. You could, um, qualify for reduced fees if you want to take community ed classes.
You also get your fees waived for E P D C T P S.
Okay, so that's why high school people should fill it out.
So it's protected information where we can't just share that across our, our admin, right? So instead the parent can receive the letter that says they're eligible and all they need is that letter.
So we're filling out something that goes to the state, up to the school.
It, it, it goes through our, our system. We do process them. We do have select people who have that information, but we don't share that information.
Thanks, Lisa.
Yep.
All right, uh, course catalog.
Nice try, Ms. Pegg.
Keep going.
Where do you want to begin? Should we start with?
I always like to know what the changes, like deletions and additions are from previous.
Uh, what we're hoping for? Yeah, so we could walk through some of those pieces.
My kids are already registered.
They are. I don't, I don't have a budget yet. So, um, I don't have a budget yet. There aren't very many changes that are occurring. We had discussions with each of the, with each of the departments on some of the pieces that their requests were made. We have in the past have courses that run on alternating schedules, um, in particular with some of our elective courses. And so most of those are maintaining the same. Uh, we, um, if you want to talk about like aspects of like questions we have when it pertains to the budget and my fixation with the supplies budget, for example, I don't have enough money to run the courses we're currently running. And so I've been bringing that up to like Lisa and Bob already, like woods and metals are popular classes and I don't have enough money, um, to run them. And so that becomes a real problem for me towards the end of the year, um, with some of those respects, because those costs have gone up with inflation. But I get the same amount of dollar per pupil, uh, related to that at a high school level, that it just doesn't, uh, equate much to that. If anyone has a huge finance eye and wants to come and take a look at my budget, I can certainly talk through it with you. Uh, but those are the things where like when we opened up the course catalog, we had actually, what was it? Like seventy-five kids interested in the floriculture class this year. But we couldn't run it because of the cost of it. Because floriculture is actually a very expensive course to run. So like unfortunately, we didn't run it because we knew we didn't have enough money to run it, even though we had a lot of kids sign up for it. We had to make a hard choice between that and some other classes that are also had high signups that we've always run, um, and, uh, particularly like our fax classes in, in particular, where we do have CTE reimbursement. Uh, we're gaining knowledge too, though, about the CTE reimbursement and like which classes qualify for that CTE reimbursement, where we can spend the money and know that we would theoretically get it back. And so we're working through that process, uh, with Brian Cashman and Lisa to be better about that. That's a place where I think the high schools needed to improve over the years prior to, you know, us being here and just our own knowledge around that. Last year, changes that occurred that impacted this year that some of you as parents experienced. We had to make, uh, over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in budget cuts out of the high school building last year. It's pretty significant. Um, it impacted a number of course offerings. So last year, not knowing the budget then either, we did make the choice to not offer Spanish to eighth graders, thinking that we, uh, needed to cut a portion of that FTE. We still have a full-time Spanish teacher, uh, on our books right now. Uh, but we're waiting for enrollment numbers to come in here in the next couple of weeks to assess like how many seats were open for this year's seventh graders. We did have a couple of, um, eighth graders that did get into Spanish one after we had, um, our ninth graders prioritized in there. For eighth grade, we've talked to Bob about this. We are not happy about having to like offer like study halls to eighth graders. So we are also looking at a class called Student Success. That we called it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we already run, as you know, if, or maybe you don't know, we run band and choir on an A B, A B day, so alternating schedule for band and choir. Uh, we run, uh, our goal is to run, uh, the student success class on an A B day as well with FIED. So rather than only having FIED for a semester, they'd have FIED year round on an A B with the student success, which is really about skill building advocacy. We still see that kids are having a hard time with social skills post COVID. We want to develop a lot of those skills, uh, with them. And then as you're aware of, um, just, uh, some of the public speaking comments this year, uh, we still have a lot of work to do around cultural understanding with our kids and just the, the way about just like being a good human being. Um, and what does it mean to be an upstander in our school community, how to speak up, how to advocate for yourself? What are the resources in the school? So creating a, and a class around that essentially as an opportunity, um, to embed some of that work. Um, the state does have this requirement out there for ethnic studies, which they also keep pushing down the road. Um, but it would have some of those components kind of like built into it with some of our own pieces that are unique here to Red Wing, um, on that A B schedule. And then the third A B potentially. We have a couple of different ideas around that, but it's going to be about enrollment and what's left over for FTE. Uh, this is where we usually try to get kids exposure to the metals and the woods, the intro classes, the culinary A's, um, those pieces, so the kids aren't in a study hall. Our goal would be that the only place eighth graders would end up in a study hall is if they only want band or they only want choir and that's on the A B schedule. And it gets really hard for us to get a different like B in for the kids in eighth grade. Nine through twelve, uh, no new course offerings. There was a name change, uh, for one that became officially a college level class. That's the Brit Lit. Um, so British Lit is officially a CIS level class now, um, where kids have the opportunity to take it for college credit.
We have the two, um, tech ed courses. So in the past, we've offered, um, PLT W classes, Intro to Engineering, Principles of Engineering Design, Electrical Engineering. Not the most engaging courses. You know, we haven't had a lot of interest in them. So this year though, we did run, uh, Intro to Engineering. We had enough students that were interested in it. But again, as it was going through, uh, Mr. Barlow was taking from that class and taking some of the other stuff that we've already done to make it more engaging. So we are taking those engineering classes and creating not two new ones, but kind of putting the best of those things together. Because one of the things.
Well, it's one of, it's one of their line items you have on your, um, item later is you'll hear a little bit more about three M, but that affected our course catalog as well. So these are the two classes that she's talking about. So our teachers, three of them just went to training, um, this past week, just returned from that. That's what you'll hear about in this three M opportunity. Um, that's occurring with both three M, Hearts of America, and then Metronics. That's a blend of all these things kind of coming together, um, which is an enhancement to the course catalog. It's, they're listed as two new courses, but they've kind of existed in some shape or form, but we're looking at the future for them. Um, and then this, you know, this gift that's coming our way at the high school level. So, uh, we are also, um, our goal is, you know, some things won't change. Like we're still going to allow eighth graders to sign up for German who wish that as an elective class over something else out of that A B, for example. So they can opt out one, out of one of those other A Bs, but it wouldn't be the FIED, um, student success. I just think that every kid really needs that. So that's what our goal would be, assuming we can make a master schedule work with that. And then, uh, if the opportunity does arise and I'm kind of predicting that it might, that there would be an opportunity for kids to get back into Spanish one in eighth grade that truly want to be there, but not to like auto-register every single kid for a foreign language. So we're going to coach around that once we have a better idea what the numbers are. And just for board awareness, um, that those of you that are new, last year, um, you know, most, basically every kid was either in German or Spanish. None went in, two years ago, none went into Dakota, uh, for whatever reason. And we took seventy-five out of Spanish because they were failing and not engaging, which meant we had to find some other place for them to be. And so like making sure we're really having conversations with kids and getting them registered in the right places, um, is really important. Uh, and so we're going to look at the numbers, which is what we did to make decisions around our cuts last year when we were asked to make, originally asked to make a million dollars in cuts, uh, ultimately asked to make seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cuts. Keep hearing these numbers. I had already asked Bob, I'm like, well, if it's a million, no and a half, you gotta be asking me for five hundred thousand. What's that going to mean? Ultimately, your questions are great. It's staff. I, I don't have unessential items, in my opinion. Maybe you'll have an opinion that's different than that. But, uh, it's where, this is where we get programmatic changes get affected. And I'm concerned about the rising costs of materials. Um, some of those materials are shipped in from outside of this country. Costs could go up any greater. And that's just, uh, something that I realistically have to be ready for when I'm preparing a budget. If we're not going to have items available.
So in my understanding, because Spanish is a hot topic in the community still, are we going, not going to allow eighth graders to do Spanish one again this year?
Just like it is for every other, um, course. It's not prioritized to eighth graders because it's not a, it's not a graduation or college requirement for them. If there are seats available, we will give it to them. But I.
And they have been able to register those for German in Dakota?
German, we have more than enough room. They've not been able to register for Dakota. They've never been allowed to register for Dakota. I just got done talking to, um, Johnny from Prairie Island about that. Um, and that opportunity to do so. My goal is to make sure kids do have the opportunity for all three languages that we have in eighth grade. And I have to prioritize nine through twelve. It's not ideal to have eighth graders on a master schedule with ninth through twelfth who are meeting graduation requirements. We run into situations where on a transcript, kids are taking a class and we fill that out for college transcripts. And that's where it gets like problematic. We actually run a lot of times end up, if you have an eighth grader in a class that has nine through twelve in it, they have a different course number set up for them. They're not receiving high school credit for it, even if they're taking the same class as a ninth grader. They don't get credit for it. Like that's the way it works in the state, unfortunately. I don't agree with it, but that's the current situation. We got a kid right now in eighth grade that quite honestly, we give him Algebra II material and he's bored. He's bored.
But if we have a full-time Spanish teacher, why can we not operate three years Spanish?
Well, so. Well, because we had more, like this last year, we had a hundred and twenty kids sign up for Spanish one.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be four sections. Okay, she only teaches five a day. So where does Spanish two, Spanish three and Spanish four come in when we have one Spanish teacher? So it's really about how do we get the students who want to continue the, like you said, the nine, twelve students, right?
I'll put it in a, in a, in a bigger scheme. Like if you look at our English department, for example, right? We offer a number of different English courses, like eight through twelve. They have five point O in FTE. They look at the numbers, they make decisions on like how many sections of each they're going to run. For example, there was a situation where our target number, as Lisa was talking about, is that we're supposed to have thirty per class. English colleagues got together, did not want to do that to their eighth grade colleague. They tried to reduce the size of those eighth grade classes by adding an extra section in there, which moved their like eleventh and twelfth grade classes a little bit higher in numbers. Because it's never a perfect number, right? Like we still want to offer the course. Like if I have twenty kids that want Spanish four, I would be obligated to offer that ahead of giving it to eighth graders. I'm not anticipating that next year. I think it will be an opportunity to offer eighth graders, quite frankly. I, until I have the registration numbers, I can't say that definitively. But in my twenty-three plus years of experience, I think that we will be back in that position after this bump year has occurred.
Because if you have a hundred and twenty kids that wanted to take Spanish and you're saying you don't have staff to do it, where are you putting them? You're putting them in another.
A different elective, a different elective. That's all it is. The Spanish is an elective class. They get a different elective class.
So that's what I meant. Can't you like flex where that FTE is and move an extra FTE to Spanish? If that's what kids want to start from, I know.
They were auto, they were auto-registered into that. They were like, in the past, they were being auto-registered into that before we had the wheel academies. So, um, like it's one of those things where we're making adjustments in the schedule to like, the FTE has changed in the years from the reductions.
We have one Spanish teacher. And, I mean, we have had postings for part-time teachers that nobody applies for. So trying to hire a Spanish teacher for one or two sections a day, I can't even imagine we'd get an applicant.
Here's another piece about that too, is like, one of the things that was never being met by state law was eighth grade art is a requirement. It was not being met. We weren't in compliance with state statute. So we only had a one point O in art. Currently in FTE, when I arrived here, we weren't in compliance with state statute. To get in compliance, I had to add that back in there, like to get in compliance with state law. That had to come from somewhere, even though I was at the, taking FTE away. We've had to make adjustments to get in compliance with what state law is and what the requirements are for M D E. I want kids to have Spanish. I have to follow the law too, though. And, and so like when I have a fixed budget and what kids have to take, many of those kids ended up in an art class over a Spanish class. Some ended up in a study hall. The study halls only exist because of the seven period day. They wouldn't exist otherwise. But I, I need them to exist because they're also our supervision model, because we don't have the dollars and cents to have any other support staff. I have one EA person in my building, um, that helps support for our hallways. So we're making it work.
There's a couple, we didn't used to have seventh and eighth grade when they were in middle school. There were not the menu of elective traces for those kids. And having eighth grade with high school kids now makes if what they're taking for core classes is prescribed, but it seems like the, um, electives are allied classes.
Right.
Last year, we, last year was basically where we could fit it.
It's what it is every year. Honestly, it depends on the, I call them academies. The academies are created based on what elective teacher still has space in their schedule. That's truly where it comes from, because there's no other place to take it from.
And you also have to be, once you get to high school, you have to have a license in that area. It's not like sixth grade where.
I can teach everything.
Teach everything.
Yeah.
And like, you know, we could, if we need another Spanish teacher, we can't say, well, that English teacher could pull in and do another section of Spanish because their numbers are lower because they have to be licensed to teach that.
It's, it gets trickier at the high school.
You know, I mean, in, in all reality, like we're asking for course registration so we can build a master schedule, but we're doing it often before we have a budget. It's backwards. It's backwards, bottom line. Like we, we're making our best guess on what it is. And we know from like a community standpoint, also, you know, when I was asked like to cut ten point O out of my building, like if I, if I'd had to go to ten point O, like we would have been talking about like ag, metals, woods, like we can't do that. We know we can't do that in this community. That's not right, right? So like, yes, there was a reduction in Spanish and some eighth graders couldn't take it last year or this year, I should say. But we still had one point O in Spanish. I, I, I will not take from some of these other things that are so important for the community also at the expense of that, when I also took most of those eighth graders out of Spanish midway through the year and then had to try to find a place to put them. To try to find a place, like we need a better system, honestly, like that's the problem. So like right now, like getting as close to an idea of like what the budget will be, building something a little bit more in. building something a little bit more intentional that we can actually plan for, that doesn't involve like a guessing game that will be like true every year moving forward, where like kids can consistently take Spanish, can consistently take Dakota language, can consistently take German. Like we want those opportunities for our kids. You know, at the middle school level, they get the world languages as like a, as a wheel piece. Now they don't anymore. Like we thought about maybe bringing that back as an opportunity, um, but like what's the best opportunity for kids getting to the opportunity to take, you know, P S E O foreign language if they want, or C I S foreign language if they want to do that as a life skill. We know that the research says when you are multilingual, like you are generally smarter than other people. So, uh, it's a huge asset. We want it for kids and yet as small as we are, our kids have a plethora of choices.
Are they able down to request an eighth grade online Spanish class?
So we're gonna, um, look at, so the online is something we played with this year for the first time. It's not in the handbook. Um, it will not be in the handbook. Uh, we are, uh, we, so we do supplemental education. Um, here's the way that we prioritize this the first year. It's not been a perfect system. As we get familiar with it, long-term goals are like when we, like we had a point six F T E English position that like we had a hard time like getting anyone for. Ideally, if like we could hire that full-time and they could be part of the supplemental, um, like licensed teacher aspect, we had enough kids taking online English, um, that that would be the opportunity, like things that you'll hear, community members, so that you're ready for this, right? Community members last year, this year, and they'll complain again next year, here soon. My kid couldn't register for two math classes at the same time. Nope, they couldn't. I don't have enough F T E for that. It's not a requirement that they take math, two, two math classes at the same time. They might want to. They might have a good reason to. They probably want to get to calculus. We can probably figure that out through supplemental. I had two freshman girls come to me today for that barrier request. They want to take, um, honors geometry and honors Algebra II next year at the same time. We have a seven period day. I know, I was like, really? And they're like, yeah. But they also don't have like a lot of intentions of like going on to calc. For them, it was about getting it done early. Our kids can graduate early if they're handling all their seven credits and take the right courses, like that becomes problematic for us on the backend. And so we have to be very intentional about the way we do the supplemental. So the supplemental becomes a place where I really want this class, but there's no more seats left. That's a place where like we want to offer a supplemental class to a kid who like has a study hall or another elective space available to them. We've had kids take supplemental classes, um, that, uh, like will have like a medical reason for something, like they leave for like a therapy appointment too often and it's impacting them. So rather than them do that, we go ahead and do it, uh, uh, for that reason as well. Or they have a unique class, like we'll have, we will certainly have a number of classes that kids sign up for, but they're under the threshold for us to run, right? And so they might want mythology, but we're not running it because it only had fourteen kids sign up for it. We'll prioritize the F T somewhere else. Our teachers will have say in like what that looks like and which courses we're actually offering. And we'll go back to those kids and be like, okay, mythology's not being offered. This is what your second choice was. And the kid might be, I really, really want mythology. Here's why I want it. And then we as an admin team will discuss like if that's an appropriate thing to replace their elective with for supplemental. We, uh, have the ability, uh, to offer, um, up to three supplementals. We've been really trying to limit it to one, um, two max. Oh, I think we only have one kid on medical, three, yeah, uh, with three. That way they're still full-time with us essentially, but they're full-time with us because there are supplementals right now. The only other thing that we are looking at right now, like did we put it in the handbook, the optional?
Yes.
Yeah, we did put the optional, talk about the optional piece.
So the other, um, thing that we added this year, it's called senior option. And we have a lot of seniors that, um, take six classes and then have a study hall and then get called in every day that they're not coming to study hall. So-
Every day.
Every day. And so we put in, um, this called senior option. And what that is, it's basically their time for study hall, but they, and they have to have their certain criteria to have it. Off the top of my head, I can't remember, but there's a certain G P A, they can't have attendance issues, they can't, um, be failing classes, um, things like that for them to be able to do this. So if they have the senior option in their, in their day, then they don't have to come that period. It is not a core, uh, credit corp, uh, course for credits. It is not a course for a grade. It is basically their study hall. So-
Has no impact us, on us as a, like from a state requirement, it's, it's state approved. Um, we looked at it as an option. I was really skeptical of it when Robin brought it up, but we looked into it and um, we have a situation right now where, uh, if you're not aware, like kids are signing themselves out and leaving and parents are okaying it all the time and clearing their absences for them for study hall on a pretty regular basis. The study halls, again, are like one of those things where we need them, um, because of the supervision piece with the teachers' contracts, the way that they're written. It's a, it is a big benefit for us, um, and a place, uh, to help us balance out our master schedule, course conflicts. So that, that was the one other piece that we've added in so far, uh, that we're looking at. But, oh, sorry. No, you're good.
Are the study halls at the end of the day, is for just leaving school early or they're just-
Anytime.
They're set, they're all through the day. It's- The most, yep, the most popular study hall request is fourth.
Is it's lunchtime, so it's seventy minutes.
It's the longest one. We got a lot of kids that want study hall fourth hour because they got a car and they could leave and they go eat somewhere and come back. And it's where we looked at. So Hastings School District, their seniors have senior privilege, um, where they have those kind of options, but yeah, there would definitely need to be a school board conversation around that one. I'm always, uh, low lary around the fact that, um, you know, kids are hopping in cars, going anywhere. But our, our P S O, P S E O structure in this city is very different from other school districts that I've worked in where like it's all day. It's all parts of the day. So there's kids coming and going all day long, uh, which is like another piece for us where our kids are really, really good about it. We have very few problems with it. But it is one of those things just to have like some awareness on when it affects our master schedule, which is why the supplemental actually has helped us.
Supplemental has been very helpful.
Were you finding the kids that come back at least?
Yeah, they come back.
They're very good about coming back.
Yeah, they come back. Yeah, we know their routines. We know their routines.
And they're very honest about why they're, I mean, they'll sign out and say lunch.
Yeah.
Go to lunch.
Yep. I can name kids and I know exactly where they're going.
Yeah.
You need to go to Starbucks right now, huh? Running down the hill, so-
I graduated from, just have a first graduate class in this building, so we prior to that, I was three years of-
Open campus.
We thought of it as a prison.
So many rules in the new building.
But I, well, I-
Yeah.
It, they've changed, yeah. It's, it's an adjustment for us some days. No, our kids are actually really, really good about, I mean, our kids are super honest with us in ways that sometimes we wish they weren't, but they're really honest with us about things, so. But there's a lot to celebrate with our kids right now, so I'm not gonna complain one bit.
You know, I was thinking about the woods and metals and casts and what didn't you call the other one in the act?
Uh, floriculture.
Any, any-
We're still running aquaculture. We got a, we got a big old, big old tub of trout going right now.
Yeah.
I mean, can you partner, can we partner with, and Ream is obviously coming in, you know, people who would partner with students in our district who have companies in the district to donate metals and woods.
I would love for you as school board members to have those conversations.
Right now, I, like, I know Mr. Garble.
Yeah.
He's a factory, he's strong in metal.
Yeah.
He's there in wherever he's camp, in order to, in order to have those pieces. I walked into the shop and there's very large chunks of aluminum, but he's cutting up in little pieces so they can weld them back together. So they're already doing some of that, but there's certain pieces like, uh, woods in particular, alright?
Yeah.
Woods, you don't end up with scrap wood other than pallets. You only make so much, so many birdhouse on pallets. So that's where you run the-
Yeah, the wood, the wood companies around here that have scrap wood, there's, um, often glue in that wood. We can't reuse it, like, uh, and, yeah, yep, we can't use their wood, um, unfortunately. And so the, the true, the true conversation is going back to like legislation and those aspects of like every, like everything in our society right now affects schools and schools are always being asked to deal with it. And, you know, the, the initial response often is like, well, you have a budget, you get to set your budget on like how you decide how to spend things. And I'm like, I don't have enough for all of things. Like I have departments that have never gotten money before. The first time I took a little bit of money and gave them like two hundred bucks each just to like buy some supplies, dry erase markers and things. But like when you have really special things like metals and woods, and if you see what some of our kids do sometimes in those spaces and how much they, I got, uh, a senior girl who is so excited about her internship that she's doing right now. Like so for me, but yes, I want to ask, and I also like, our community does so much for us already. Like we gave ninety thousand dollars away in scholarships out of our community last year from our community members. Like that's an impressive thing. They give a lot already. Um, we need to be better with advocacy to the state legislators around these pieces and, um, how things are funded. I hope that they have the forgiveness around the compensatory model. We can find a better way to get those dollars and cents into schools. And like when schools are doing this well, like, like I said, we do have a responsibility to be better about our reimbursement around C T E expenditures. And we're getting that cleaned up. But like, that's the biggest one in that aspect of is like figuring those things out, um, and doing those things well, um, so that our kids have those opportunities. Um, and Lisa's done some great things for us too. Like I just want to say that also, like I do have the ability to like carry some things over now into the future for like bigger projects or, um, pieces around that nature. But, you know, the cost of metal and wood, like just our gas prices alone for our welders, for example, like that's gone up immensely. Like we ran out of money last year, I think in April for gas. Like we, so I had to find an extra thousand dollars. I don't remember where I took it from, but I took it from somewhere and made sure we had enough gas for kids to keep welding to the end of the year.
And those are the programs that keep kids in school.
Yeah, we have kids that they probably wouldn't come if they weren't good to do that. Yep.
Also, we're getting to a point finally in education where we are with flight paths, we're looking at all of the options out there. And we need more people in the trades. And we don't offer those woods, the metals, the smoke ass engines. How, how are kids ready to be ready for that?
I mean, and then you have fax as well. The cost of the food for fax classes has gone up too. They're doing fewer labs now because of that.
So speaking of that, when you brought that up, and I, I think I might have mentioned this a lot, is there, this came from my, my sister-in-law, actually mentioned this, when they, she went to, I won't even say where she went to school, lives close to here. And they sold, I can't remember if it was ice cream sandwiches or just big cookies instead of buying them. You know, they would make these in there and then sell them.
We are not a commercial kitchen, so the food they make, they cannot sell to, they could sell to teachers, they cannot sell to students. And we can't sell, I don't know, what are the, the healthy, the healthy snacks. To our students as well. Yeah, I don't know what it's called, but there's certain guys that-
Sorry, what was that? In the G C D building?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is one. Um, there's, there's a couple of other requirements that are needed. Um, there's a, a safe serve license requirement. If we were to operate as like our own catering business, like some schools have done, um, we'd have to go through a process with that through the city of Red Wing. I think those are all opportunities that potentially could exist out there at some point in time. You take our cafe that exists in the high school and quite frankly, the underutilization of what that space could be. There's some opportunities, like if we pursue them, um, but there's not a lot of grant dollars out there for those kind of things right now. But there's some, I mean, if you want to go visit, like I'd say, go look at Shakopee High School's fax lab in their high school, like, uh, now Shakopee, uh, tribal nation helped pay for their high school, um, so I'll say that. But like, if you look at their fax lab, that's in their main foyer and they have their self-serve license, they cater events. But it's, you know, it's all stainless steel. They got TVs mounted everywhere for their labs and they're also a place that has projected gain of enrollment the next ten years. But yeah, there's some opportunities there and, and we have two amazing fax teachers that want to do that kind of stuff. And are clamoring for that kind of, kind of piece. But again, like when it comes to the budget, yeah, they've had to cut back on labs because the only place they can buy groceries in town is Walmart really, and it's expensive.
Well, I've seen, um, the huge just, uh, they're supposed to be to build homes in the community, like as, you know, and we used to do that through Southeast Tech.
Yep, it's an offer that goes out countywide, like it's, it's, uh, do we have, there's a capacity piece there behind it and do we have kids that are at that scale level to do that? And so there's, there's a piece, yeah, that, that habitat for humanity piece did go out countywide. We could take a look at it and consider it for a moment, but-
If you started at this school level, would you be one of the construction companies that was ever driving that to donate back?
That was state-driven for that one. That was a state-driven grant, um, that drove that one that Good Hugh signed up for. And actually, we did have a couple of kids participate in it from Red Wing High School. They were still a part of it, but not through like our school itself.
Well, we have great donators that we approve every school board meeting.
We do.
Like I think maybe just maybe just a call out formally, but you know, where do you think, so it comes to, because the community is really good and companies are really good. It's tax write-offs, it's-
Does the, do the trade, uh, I'd say trades, do, does wood shop, metal shop, are, are they involved in clubs at all? Back when I, when I went to school, it was, it was back, I was a full-Asian, I was a club from America. Kind of heard about it, gone, right?
But it's Skills USA now. That's, that's the-
You know, we, we put this fate in that where-
I don't know really how to answer that.
Yeah, we, I mean, we have three kids in competition today. They think they scored enough points to qualify for state. They're gonna find out, probably, they probably know by now. We have kids that are, uh, Bill Emery's been amazing, even though he came here to get away from agriculture and he wants to take over for Doug Barlow eventually. He has restored our F F A. And our kids, uh, we, I just signed off on their farm to be nationally recognized again here in Red Wing. So he's done an amazing job with that. Uh, so we do have kids doing club wise to, to kind of like tail that in also, like when you talk about costs, we added clubs and enrichment back into our day, as many of you know, on Wednesdays. It's just a thirty-minute period, but we have kids that are doing those kind of things for thirty minutes also that don't always have access to it in their schedule. Which means, you know, gas welders are being used more. There's no, there's no budget for that kind of item. And so like, think about that, like where we want our kids having this opportunity, to me, it's for kids to have a brain break and to like get to do something with peers in a different kind of way and engage socially in a more positive way. Like this is my way of dealing with COVID a little bit differently. We've had such a positive response around club and enrichment time. But, you know, there's costs involved with it as well. Uh, and, but those clubs meet is my point around that. So you have a lot of clubs and organizations that meet during that time.
Do we utilize social media as potential with, with getting out there, what, what these kids, you know, projects like, um, you, you mentioned that, I think it was a freshman girl who was excited, or, you just mentioned-
Senior, yeah.
That was so excited about her internship. Was she given a pass with that welding or with that workshop?
Yep, yeah.
I'm just curious if we can, if we utilize our social media to look at all the, and projects that kids do and stuff like that.
No, uh, but it's also, I mean, so I think the high school does an amazing job of doing it frankly, but it's also my full-time teacher who's doing it on like a, on a stipend. And it requires everyone. I think that the aspect of, we were talking today about the aspect of like, how do we get more images in front of, not, we weren't actually thinking about it from a public standpoint, but from like a student standpoint for registration of like the things that go on in our classrooms for people to see. You know, when I got hired here, uh, Mick Wenland had sent me the videos of the fifty-some-odd seniors that were doing their internships in the city of Red Wing, which was really fun to watch them do their presentations about their experiences. And then like today I talked to one of our seniors who wants to be a marine biologist and they are doing a saltwater tank here on campus as part of their senior project. Like, one thing about me is I just kind of like approve things, like figure it out, let's like figure it out. We had a kid last year that wanted to be a tattoo artist. Legally, you can't do that under the age of eighteen, but you can go watch as part of your internship and be a part of a tattoo parlor shop and understand like what the requirements are behind that, the licensure, what it means to run a business, how to get your L L C, like all those processes, right? So like we want our kids, if they have a dream or a passion, to have those exposure pieces. But we need to figure out a better way, better way of like getting that out because like we pay different people at all the buildings to be our like content managers for like Red Wing High School. getting that out because like we pay different people at all the buildings to be our like content managers for like Red Wing High School Facebook page. But there's stuff going on all day long. Like, I mean, that could be my full-time job, honestly. She does that too. She does it too. She does that too. I mean, there's content that you'll see on all of our pages that actually came from him. Cause like, it's not like Kristen had time to run out and get it for us. Like she got it from someone else. She's teaching all day long. So Kristen's amazing at our newsletters and our Red Wing High School page. Who?
Kristen, a teacher.
I, I mean, it's a, it's a big job when you're thinking about the level of what it is. Like at any given moment, there's things happening simultaneously. I think that's part of the thing that you need to be like aware of is like, it's not a perfect schedule for like when these things are occurring. I try to run around to things on Wednesday. We got kids at three different things going on at the same time that I think would all be good social media events. But if it were, if you said, hey, Josh, I need you as a principal to go take pictures of these things, I wouldn't get to all three of them because they're twenty miles apart. But they're all, they're all good things. She's taken a lot of those photos that you see often, like they'll just come out through like the Red Wing High School page or one of the other pages. Like she's gotten a lot of that content for us, honestly. She runs pieces there and helps get the pieces in the paper for the Republican Eagle with the kids. Our kids work with her on that as part of their experience.
I want to preface this with saying that I, I understand that we, we don't need to, it might be dangerous, but I, I'm going to ask him. What about students running, running those and having, having the pulse approved? I mean, yeah, I mean, you know what I'm saying, the danger of.
The danger of that. Yeah, yeah.
School newspaper for a damn.
So we, we, for the first time in a while, we actually have someone who is the advisor for like the school newspaper. I think it's something that could be discussed. So Molly Kiefer Sutton was recently approved by the board to be the advisor for the school newspaper. That was a state law legislative change recently. This past year where like it's a requirement that it has to be offered to all kids and not only offered and expected for all kids, but also that they have free press to write what they wish. Like we can't control it. It could be one of those things that's discussed with the kids, but it really would be up to them like what they choose to post. I think that those are separate things though, like their paper is their paper versus like our social media page is our social media page. I do think that the opportunity to like, again, going back to like QR codes or whatever else, like if kids want to submit photos, we've done that before where we've asked kids to like photo dump something to us. So that we've had content from something and use their photos for various events. We've done that. We don't do it on a regular basis. Like we could be better about that. Like I'll tell you, Kristen asks teachers all the time for like photos that are going on. They go into our newsletters that go out.
Say, sure, it's safe to assume there's some highly skilled students capable of posting social media.
There are, there are. We've had kids at different times. We had a kid last year. We have a kid right now who's very good at video editing. But I also think that like the district should consider that like anytime you're paying someone, like asking someone about their creative talent, like, don't you feel they should be compensated for it in some way? And like sometimes compensation is through like, one of my kids right now is doing the project in my office. He is being compensated in the sense that like it's part of his independent study credit. Right? Like it, it would have to be a class for them, I would say. Like I would want to offer it in that way. But anytime you offer a class, now I have to put FTE with it as well. So now I have to take something else away off the table. That's, that's the challenge of it, right? We've found creative ways around it sometimes or had kids that are willing to do it. We had the senior last year that she spent the entire semester making the senior video for graduation day last year for all the seniors. And it was a fantastic, amazing video. There was some great content in there. Finally found out who did the fireworks. So that was nice. Only took six months to figure it out. Could, yeah, we could. Certainly open to the idea of it. Right now I only know of one senior who would be really good at that. I think the hard part is like making sure kids stay motivated with it daily. And how do you get them to the place when they still have six other classes that they're required to be in or seven other classes that are required to be in? Are we going to give them a, a press pass that releases them from class at any given moment? Would you as a parent want your kid being free, free rein to leave or hop in a car and? We got kids that read it sunny side every couple of weeks from one of our clubs, right? Like we take pictures of that because we have had them with them, but if we didn't, wouldn't we want the kids to be released to go take pictures of that? Yes, we can do better.
Well, I was, I'm just, I'm just trying to, trying to figure out like if there's more officials, you know, having, having students, giving them some responsibility on that. To just, it was just kind of, it was something I thought about.
Yeah.
Something came up on social media over the weekend. Won't get into that one, but I just.
My wife updates me on Red Wing. I avoid it. I avoid it.
But no, like I said, it was, I know, I know school, high schools changed the tons since I was a kid, but I'm just, I just, I like to see kids react to that and, you know, and just, and try that. So it was more of a question.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll extend this offer to any of you. If you ever want to come in and take a walk with me and see like, you'll, you'll see that there are a lot of misnomers about what's being said in Red Wing convo. There are a lot of really great things that are going on in the high school every single day and our kids are doing amazing things and I, I do wish we had better reminders to teachers like, hey, take a minute, break that cell phone policy that you're going to discuss later and take out your phone and take some pictures. And let's make sure we're highlighting the things that our kids are doing. So we do try to ask teachers to send stuff to us when they have something coming up for us to highlight and, and share and get it out.
There are multiple clubs.
Twenty plus?
Have really great Instagram accounts.
They do. Yeah. And they're not managed by us at all. Like there's a whole bunch of like clubs. Yeah, like.
Sustainability Club, ESU.
Yep.
Spanish, no. Hispanic Students United.
Yep.
Hispanic Student Union, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. NASA.
Yeah, almost, yeah, most of our clubs have their own pages, like BSU every week did a Black History Month post.
Videos. Yeah. So they are doing their things.
It's just not attached to the high school, to the district.
I try and follow everything and anything.
And it gets hard.
Red Wing on Facebook so I can share them, you know, and then bird side does something or a middle school play. To my limited follow.
Yeah, we're missing a concert right now, folks.
Yeah.
Don't put me on the front of the agenda anymore.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Page five, math discussion.
Hello, everybody. Well, Cher, I just have a little one-page graphic. Let me get in here and I'm actually the next three things. So we'll do math first. So most of our curriculum, especially our math and reading and social studies and science are on six-year contracts. And our contract is coming up for K-12 math. So we have a K-six implementation, sorry, K-five implementation this fall. And then the following school year will be six twelve. So during last school year, we started a math review committee. We took volunteers from all across the districts. We had K-12 represented, but we really focused on K-five, knowing that we were going to pilot this school year. And we narrowed it down as a committee to three different curriculums to pilot. And each one of those was piloted, starting with this school year in every single grade level. So we kind of did a massive pilot because it's the really only true way to see the best fit for a curriculum for the district. And everything that we piloted was highly reviewed through ed reports and all the other sources as well. And so we had bridges in vision and stepping stones that were piloted K-five. So three teachers per grade piloted that. And they also, in addition to math review committee meetings, we had pilot meetings this year as well. So based off of the pilot this year, we are going to be implementing two different curriculums in K-five. That wasn't a decision that we had going into it because it really is what is the best fit. Because ideally you have a company that makes a really great curriculum that's K-12. That doesn't really exist. They make it. It doesn't mean it's good across all those grades. So we're going to be doing K-three stepping stones. It's actually kindergarten has an older version of it right now. It's the only grade that has it. That's a different conversation as to how we have like a single curriculum in one grade from six years ago. So we're going to be doing stepping stones, K-three, along with a specific supplemental part of bridges. So number corner is a fluency piece centered around calendar. And it does a really great spiral fluency from fractions to addition, subtraction, all those different things as well. And then envision will be in grades four, five. That does continue up. I'm not talking about six, twelve right now. We have envisioned already in six and seven. Right now it's looking likely that we'll actually end up envision fourth through twelve. Envision just is not strong K-three. It just isn't. It is not hands-on enough. It is a K-three too heavy reliable on digital and your single page worksheet. And that is not going to be helpful for students for mathematical practices. So that's where we are right now. I know some of our quotes, I don't know the full cost right now. We're going to be doing a six-year purchase and then math review committee is focusing on six, twelve this year. And next fiscal year will be six, twelve. Six years ago, K-12 was bought in one single year. That is no longer fiscally possible with the cost of curriculum increasing. There's no way to do a K-12 purchase in one year. So that is where we are with K-five. Pilot teachers have known. I met with Bob and Jen and Mike actually on our e-learning day just to finalize this as well last Wednesday. So I will take questions.
So the cost associated with increasing inventory using Imperial.
Yeah. So when you buy a six-year purchase, it is everything you need for six years. So often, for example, stepping stones, elementary often does not have textbooks in the way that you think of textbooks. They're consumables. So that's six years is six years worth of consumables. You get a better deal buying a six-year contract. Also, if you look at research, it takes three to five years to become really good at something as the teacher. What we would love is that we find the perfect fit for us and at the end of six years, you just renew it. I can tell you our current math, I was actually a teacher when it was last, when this one was picked. One, it doesn't actually exist anymore. My math is no longer a curriculum. So it doesn't actually exist. You couldn't renew it. We also would not renew this. It was not piloted. It was not tested out. It was a purchase based off of samples and you don't want to do a curriculum purchase without trying it out in the district. So that is where we are with math right now. We will be doing training with all of our staff in June on both of them. It's best to do that training in the spring as opposed to you don't want to train during workshop week and have to implement in two weeks. So we will have training, we have those three days in June. Everyone, K-five will be trained in the new math. And then the first day back actually during workshop week is we'll be bringing in additional trainers and I'll have that entire day to get everything ready. Teacher manuals and materials will arrive before the end of the school year too, if anybody wants their manual over the summer. So.
How do you catch those teachers up that don't get hired themselves?
Then I, so that, that is, we have a plan. I, they still get the same training. It's just going to have to be in August. I don't want it to be in August. So we know we're going to catch ninety-five percent of people by training them in the spring. But we also have the same as when we're in the second year and I have a new first grade teacher, right? There's a variety of doing that. Sometimes they do a train the trainer model. So I was our my math and wonders the last couple of years. But that's also built in and I talk to them as well with the curriculum companies of like, how do we catch people up? Stepping Stones actually does, which is really nice. Most don't do this. It's, you have a full day of training during all six years, which is a lot of support as well. So professional development is built into the six-year contracts as well. So any other questions? I forgot to mention there's intervention with both of these. So there's an intervention program that will be available for K-three for special education teachers and four, five. Four, five is actually more digital based. You'll find that often now as well because it relies on adaptive more than we could be in a small group. So it's an adaptive program called Success Maker that comes with Envision as well. So we did make sure when we looked at it that it was going to be able to support tier one, two and three. So.
Or can be used for specialized or in time?
There's a separate, so there's the core curriculum. And then I'm blanking on the name for K-three right now that goes with stepping stones is the companion tier three. It has big box in the name and that's all I have stuck on right now. There's something after that. And then envision, it's called Success Maker that goes with that. So that is part of it as well. And we are just waiting on the final. I know our final quote on Envision, which came in really nice. If I say it, it probably might not sound nice to you, but I can tell you it's extremely reasonable. And then I know what number corner is, but we're waiting on the final for stepping stones right now.
So do the fourth, fourth grade and fifth grade curriculums include textbooks?
They do, yes. And actually I want to say fourth grade is still consumable and fifth grade is not. And one amazing thing about Envision, which is why, and it definitely does not work K-three. The e-textbook has a brand new technology because it's a 2025 version that we're getting in vision. It translates into a hundred and twenty languages, which has never happened before. You can always find Spanish, but in the e-text, you can highlight a paragraph, pick your language. It will do the text so you can visually see it. It will also read it to you, which has never occurred for anything that we've ever found before. So that's really fantastic.
And the kids' home books can.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So all new products from SAVIS, starting with 2025 going forward will have that technology. Any questions? You are welcome to come join us for math training in June. 3M Math at Heart of America. Both of these things are really cool. They're interwoven together. 3M Math is a program from 3M. We were approached, I want to say June last year is when I attended the first meeting. 3M Math is a partnership with 3M, a technical college and a high school. So all three of those must exist in one town, which we have. So 3M Map approached us about starting this and it is a mechatronics program that both is in with conjunction with Southeast and with our high school. And it is a grant, so it is a partnership that has no cost to us whatsoever. And the foundation of that is we get these ten mechatronic trainers at our high school that are going to be implemented into that course right there, engineering principles, mechatronics course right there. The high school students can receive a certificate in mechatronics if they continue to go on to Southeast. It ties into that program as well. We had, as Mr. Feeks had said earlier, we had three staff that went to training last week in Tennessee to be certified in the mechatronic trainers, along with a member of the Southeast mechatronic staff as well. So that was the initial program that we were offered. We're very, very excited about it. Also for like donations, you're talking about it. Not everybody knows that 3M gives, which is their charitable donations, Red Wing actually has a full-time 3M gives person right in Red Wing here and they reach out and Ann works with them constantly. And they give lots of money for us for STEM programming throughout the year. And actually just we got another offer today as well. That just often runs through donors' shoes because how 3M gives is set up, they can't directly give us the money. But they can do it through donors' shoes, if that makes sense. And then you're just have to go with the vendors that they have available, but they have been fantastic. I want to say we are the fourth or fifth location in Minnesota with a 3M map program. And there's only twelve overall across the United States. Because we're getting 3M map this year, I got an email, I think, what, December, I think, Bob? And 3M is giving money to Heart of America. So this is still 3M, but Heart of America's what? Was it quick?
It's quick.
I think that I got an email in December said yes, and then we met in January. So Heart of America is coming in and they're transforming two of our classrooms upstairs, I-202 and I-203. And they are turning one of them into a mechatronics lab and one of them to a robotics lab. This includes all new furniture, all new desks, painting, signs, 3D printers, many, many things. It's super, super cool. It's a very tight timeline. They set the timeline. It, it's March tenth and they have to be done by March thirty-first, the end of March. So they will be doing a lot of the work next week. Alan and his team have been doing some demo and taking things out of those spaces. We have the design decks. We actually have an ongoing meeting every Tuesday at nine thirty. Sometimes twice a week. Last week was, yeah, sometimes twice a week with Heart of America. Sometimes twice a week, last week was, yeah, sometimes twice a week with heart of America. We have the ribbon cutting ceremony in April fourth at nine AM, which you are all invited to. And there is quite a few people coming in from the three corporate and everybody for that as well. So it's the big check for the three M map and then the ribbon cutting ceremony opening the space of the two transformed classrooms. Mechatronics. I'm laughing because I'm so not the best person to explain this.
So mechatronics is a combination of a lot of different technical aspects. It includes electronics, mechanical systems, hydraulics, a bunch of different pieces that all come together. So I know when I was talking to the president of the college, Marsha Danfuss, she said, we got to move. Because it was just a tough one to figure out. This is a program available at some.
Yep. It's yep. And it's a program they have there too. And the trainers that we're getting are actually portable, so they're going to live in our, the new mechatronics lab. But it's also they're designed to be portable. So if we want to take them down as an introduction to the middle school or an eighth grade classroom to be like, here's the program, here's what it means. They're also designed for that where you don't have to do the whole lessons with them as well. So that is, it's very exciting. But it has been a very tight timeline because most of it has all happened in the last three and a half weeks. Or less. So we did the design, we've looked at the design deck twice. It's going to be really, they're going to be beautiful, beautiful spaces though. So. Yes. And that will be at Hoved Hall at nine AM. Questions about that at all? Yes, actually in three M is reaching out to a lot of media. So I would anticipate quite a bit of media there that day. That's kind of on there too. I have a whole like timeline of who's doing what for that day. Because they're actually flying in quite a few people as well. Yes. And the heart of, no, and the heart of America is, it's not a common, three M map is a little more common, but not really. We're like one of twelve or fourteen in the U.S. I, all I know right now is there's four schools that were offered this quarter, this three, through three M through heart of America, their transformation. But it's not four schools in Minnesota, it's four schools. And we were connected because we were getting three on math this year.
They transform spaces, this is what they do, but this combination is super unique. It just worked really well with the mechatronics at the same time.
It's great. Yeah, we're getting new robotics things. So there's that engineering design robotics course, I think Mr. Fuchs had briefly talked about that as well. Will be, is also in the court, the course catalog. So it'll be a mechatronics lab and a robotics lab. All new three D printers, which is great because ours, our not new one don't always work. So it's pretty exciting. So we're excited to see the space, but they'll be doing the bulk of their work next week during spring break.
So one, one piece of information is to understand intentionality sometimes. So licensed math teacher two years ago. I knew that she had an engineering background, began having conversations. She's teaching science for us this year. We sent her to this training, knowing that it fits her engineering background. And hearing back from her and her two colleagues that went with her. Now we've built like some long-term interest for the future, which is really positive for us and net gain. When you talk about staffing pieces wise, because it's also a hard position to like staff. Any further questions on that?
It's super cool. It's been, it's been just, it's been unique actually just to experience it as well. So it's been, yeah. And the deadline came from, from, from three M. They're like, we want all of these projects done end of March. And we just had, we, we had some switch of heart of America employees, which is where it just, we met people and then that's not who ended up being our people. So, but yeah. I, the design tech is amazing. So I'm super excited to see everything. So. Okay. So this is twenty six, twenty seven, because next school year's calendar is already approved. Honestly, the major thing to note is it is the very latest school can ever start because Labor Day is on September seventh. So that actually kind of affects quite a bit of it if you look at it because school, first day school is really late that, that year. Other than that, it's very much aligned with the twenty six, five, twenty six calendar that is already approved. So I didn't know, I, it would have been your board packet. So just any questions you might have on it. Yeah, we'll adjust if we need to. We went back to a little bit less PD days because there is red act training requirement this year, but it's much less staff than like the seventy five we have this year. And graduation is already not a school day, so we won't have to deal with what we dealt with this year. And if we honestly don't have a regular snow day, I will be coming to you in April to do what we had to do last year because right now we do have school on graduation day and that was straight to get to the requirements of need a minimum of a hundred and sixty five school days. So this one I was hoping to get to more, but because of how late school starts, we have a hundred and sixty seven school days on this calendar. Yes. Yep. And you also give families greater opportunities because it is, otherwise you have from what three thirty to seven. And so you just get more families because not everybody can attend an evening conference. And then we did keep, we started this year, it's also on next year's calendar that Wednesday before Thanksgiving as a non-student day. And that came from looking at student attendance on that day for traveling and even, even teacher attendance being gone that day because we've struggled sometimes on that day to like have enough staff here because you're not likely to get subs on that day either. So any other questions? Friday and so you, me and Kenan are meeting on Friday and then you and I are meeting on Tuesday.
Ready for the regular board meeting in March. If something happened and they were not able to, I would put it on the April workshop as an agenda item that could be voted on, but in Texas. Next up, three year policy. So three year policy reviews, I mean those, they're all listed on that comments and within their board packet. So there's a bunch of them. These are not policies that will end up having any changes to. If you wish to take a look at them, they're available on the actual stuff. ESU advisorship. Okay, so the negotiations committee met on this and basically what we looked at, so we took all of the, all the advisorships that we have, some of them are paid advisors, some are not. Some example might be we have a robotics club. Okay, so they're not the advisor for the robotics club who's in paid public family robotics team that has a coach, that person without a stipend that's within the contract. We went through and we tried to compare, looked at the kind of the expected amount of time and we arrived at, it's kind of comparable to a high school student council advisor was when we compared all those. So then looked at the stipend that was assigned to that, there was category two or a category three stipend. So the difference between those, category three is like twenty three hundred dollars and then category two is twenty eight hundred dollars. And when we looked at those, we felt that it would be best put in category two or they had to think the total amount for the stipend for the current year was two thousand eight hundred thirty nine dollars. And because we have an individual who has been serving in that role this year, I checked with MSDA to make sure that we didn't, we weren't violating anything or we ended up providing a stipend and there is no problem with that. So we could, go back, you can't go back and really then the beginning of those six or year. But if the board were to decide to add a stipend, the individual has been serving that position up until this point would receive that stipend up until then. So that's where we ended up. Do you have anything else to?
I guess the one comment that I remember we had was, you know, we can kind of set the expectations for those advisor if we're paying this person.
Yeah, well, the only concern that I have that I just wanted to bring from, because I have a list, I put on a list of the co-curricular activities. And so when you look at the paid, like you brought up comparing it to like a category two or a category three. These are, when you look at what the groups are that are the, that have paid advisors, it's not the same type of group. So when I look at BSU and I, I think that's a self identified group. So I see like BSU is that. On the other activity list is the gender sexuality alliance, the Spanish student union, NASA or the Native American Student Association. I mean, those are all self identified groups that have advisors or someone in position that is currently not paid either. So I guess maybe I thought they are not paid advisors in there when I look through.
So everybody that's, each of those positions, as you had referred to, whether they are, so if they're a club, those teachers essentially are already being paid, they're on staff, those are the ones who are ending up leading those particular clubs. Okay. So when we look at, so if somebody has a club, so if they want to have the chess club, for example, or any of these individual clubs, teachers are there, they're already being paid as part of the regular school day. Makes sense?
That makes sense, but.
So then let's, when we look at student council, student council, they need to put the kids during class. Okay. And that's a piece that ends up being there, but there's additional parts that they are performing outside of the regular school day. So it might be in that instance, you know, their Elton Chaparral homecoming dance. So they're working through some of those other pieces. This particular position, what we did was we looked at their duties that they were laid out. And it seemed like that was the most equivalent comparison.
Right. I, where I'm going with it is you have all of these, you have this grouping of self identified groups that currently have advisors. And I'm, what I'm asking is, are we going to go across the board and make sure that those advisors are also able to receive stipends? Because I think it would be set up, it seems odd to me that we're approving a paid advisorship position for one of those groups. When the other ones haven't come to the table and those other groups are all staff people. And we have a shortage of nominated people on our staff. And so.
There's staff people for now. I, we have to separate the person from the position.
There we, we don't want to set a precedent with our understanding in full.
Right. That's all like, I love training and like, I'm not against him being paid as an advisor.
So we got to separate individuals from the position. So we have to look, you know, are we going, it comes out, are we going to fund this position or not? That's really where it's, um, always the concern that they want to be unintended consequences anytime you have one position and not to the rest. Not a clean, easy answer.
No, I just don't want to, you know, I think. No, I think if we're going to consider one of them, we need to consider all of the self identified groups. That's my position on that. And then maybe how many of those self identified groups are involved in supervision and chaparralming planning for activities outside of the school day. But I look at like even like BSU, one of the things listed on there was planning with Juneteenth. But like our school district isn't even like, why are we planning Juneteenth as a school district? Wouldn't that be more of a community function? School isn't even sessioning.
Well, the school isn't planning, BSU is the one that's, that we're working with. I mean, I believe they work with the city, I think, not exactly sure at all.
Right. But we're at, but we're being asked to fund the advisor to work with that group. Do you see what I'm saying? Like they can work with Juneteenth, I don't. But like, is that, is that the school districts responsible to fund that? Well, I think we're providing a leadership opportunity for our students that, that is unique and important. And they need guidance in that. And so I think that that's just another example. There are many organizations in the community that provide partnership with us to make things happen. And I see this as a partnership opportunity for us to give back to the community. But then what I would say counter is we have a pride festival. We're not paying someone to provide advisorship to our gender sexuality alignment alliance to do the same thing. It seems not applicable.
Right.
Do you want to say?
Yes.
Pride is planned by an outside organization. And Juneteenth is planned by our students with the support from, it's, it's the opposite thing. So there's a group, an outside organization that plans Pride. And now it's part of Aspire, which is part of youth outreach. So I don't know who does it, who plans this festival.
I guess the perspective that I would try and understand here is why are the academic benefits here for these, for these advisors? How does this relate back to our education? And how was that also tied to building their community between these different groups that are still?
Great. There's research that supports affinity groups that helps students establish an identity within a system. Improve student achievement, improve graduation rates, improve attendance.
There wouldn't be a Juneteenth if it wasn't for BSU.
They started it.
Red Wing, Red Wing City did the right thing by giving space for them to help co-plan. Red Wing City, honoring Dakota project, worked with us as a school district planner, Powell, worked in coalition on that. They worked in coalition with our BSU students to plan Juneteenth, something that hadn't happened here before. Because who amongst Red Wing leadership falls in that category to like help support that process? So they worked with HRC and BSU to help do that. My question back would be, well, Juneteenth happens to not fall during the school year, but what if it did? Would that make a difference in your question? Like, they're still our students all year, whether it's summertime or not, they're still our kids. We don't have staff that were on staff. From an optics perspective, my first day here, not knowing who is paying for what positions, my first day here.
My first day here, after my interview, there was students from all different dams, of all different backgrounds in my interview process. Was, there was clearly a liaison for our Native American students. There appeared to be clearly a liaison for our Spanish-speaking students, and there was not one for our Black students. So from an optics standpoint, I mean, quite frankly, it's a nice start. It's kind of small. Like, like, I, I, I wish that we had someone on staff, but it wouldn't be the question you're asking. Because we have a number of staff that are supporting some of these other pieces that you're asking for, and they're, they're being paid. And staff members are happy as Red Wing employees to help do that. And if there was a position in the contracts that had like cultural liaison, we have the ability to hire someone for that. And prioritize funding for it. I fully support that as a priority, because I think that we're at a threshold with the number of students that we've had. And if, you know, two of our school board members did attend my workshop on February seventh, they got to hear the voices of our students. And the need for that affinity space is clear. It's one of the few safe spaces they have throughout the day. We work tirelessly to address the issues that they experience, and yet they continue to happen. And so, yeah, a cultural liaison, person that looks like them, understands their experiences, and certainly an advisor that helps them plan Juneteenth. The events that took place throughout the month of Black History Month, the things, the guest speakers they've had all year long in their club time. I'm sure they can come speak to you and tell you who's all come and spoken to them throughout the year that are the educational pieces that you're curious about. There are lots of educational benefits associated with it. And he was our honored guest speaker for Thursday as well. And he's been volunteering for more than just this year, last year as well. I reached out trying to find someone who could just come together and communicate and help support our cause. So I understand your point.
Yeah, I'm not against any of it by any means, I'm just looking at the equitability of all the other groups that we have.
Is this something we would vote on every year, or is it going forward, you would always?
Typically you don't. I mean, once you have, you're, I mean, you've got the whole list of positions, some of them are filled, some of them are not. Depending upon conditions at the time. So basically what would allow is the, the board approving it, it would allow the administration, particularly in Mr. Pugh's case, if we were in his building. Would allow flexibility then to fill that position if it's warranted at the time.
And if it is, uh, does it become a paid position? Do you have to post that then for applications?
No, so I, I checked with MSBA, and they said that, again, because we've had somebody who's been serving that role. It's not a violation if we're to change that to a paid position. I don't want a response from Gary Lee. Well, that's where it sits for the time being. We'll all do what I can and raise all thumbs, make the people available to MSDA if we can. Continue to work through questions.
Oh, yeah, I, that's, I just, I wanted consistency, like, one of us.
All right, bus ad hoc committee. So on that, so coming up here now, we have to do an RFP for our transportation this fall. So basically, there's different pieces that end up going into that, but we want to have that RFP in place in August. And that way it will give the bus companies time to work through it, end up with an answer on that probably in October. Someday in October, maybe early November, it will go in place for the following school year. So, well, we, we haven't had a full, Lisa, do you know when was the last time we had a full, the ten years ago?
I think it was.
So, that's a long time. So now we're going through that complete process. We've certainly experienced challenges with transportation over the course of time. Right now, it's been better as of late, but certainly the first half of the school year, it was very, very, very challenging. And then you see that along with increased costs. We went up sixteen percent a year ago, and now we're guaranteed nine percent for next year. Twenty-five percent increase in two years is not all that great. I did kind of a little check to see regionally. Most of the time, districts end up spending about four percent of their general fund on transportation. Ours is seven. Okay, that three percent difference on what we spend on transportation is pretty big. So, and we're talking about budgetary issues and things like that. So we'll be working to get that put together to the best of our ability in time to ours.
Is there a possibility, can we, do we have the capacity to have other companies? Like a different bus company?
I think yes, under the RFP, you know, but it's like anything else, bus companies are very territorial. They, uh, they've got their areas, and they pull on stuff from somebody else's sandbox, and it's just hearing what you're saying. All right, cell phone policy. Okay, so on the cell phone policy, so the legislature put a law in place, and you have to have a cell phone policy in place by March 50th of this year. We have a cell phone policy that is in place through all of our buildings in the district. So they're not exactly the same, because high school is different than the middle school. Pretty much from the middle school down, they're relatively similar, in which basically kids can't have any cell phones during the entire school day. This year, the staff at the high school, they kind of revised the policy here last year. Make sure that there was something in place, because there certainly were a number of issues where kids were not paying attention in class. To do that, they should have been, teachers were having difficulty managing that with kids. And we started out at the beginning of the school year with a policy in place that you can have your phone with you, but you can't have it on the class. Okay? By and large, as I've asked kids, as well as teachers, they think that it's going really quite well. Today I talked to three senior boys in my class, and they said it's way better this year than it has been the last couple of years. Always the weak point that you end up with is consistent enforcement across individual teachers. That's always the weak point in any kind of policy, because if a teacher over here says, ah, it's okay, you can go ahead and do that. Teacher over here says absolutely not, we move it away. So I think there's some things that we can do to strengthen perhaps the existing policy. I visited a little bit of the Mandy Stokes today, I had a few conversations with Mr. Pugh's about helping to ensure that we end up with a little bit more consistency there. And even, what I would like to see ultimately is during class, so that means when the bell rings and the kids are supposed to be in class. That we should not be seeing cell phones anywhere, whether it's in class, in the hallways, if the kid leaves the classroom for whatever reason. That was an area that we had talked about tightening up. So there's a few things that are, I think, that we can do a little bit better. But overall, Mr. Pugh's, I mean, can you speak to how you think it's going?
It's just, it's just enforcement. There's days when you walk in and, even teachers that do it really well are having a hard day. And they're other desk, and we got kids in the back there that have their cell phones out, and they see one of us and they pop them away quickly, but we still take them. We still confiscate phones here and there. The kids do receive attentions for them if it's been multiple offenses. For the large part, it's really scaled back. I do personally, like, have a little bit of concern around this aspect of, you know, we encouraged, or we suggested to teachers, like, well, you could ask kids to leave their cellphone when they're going to the bathroom. But now, like, you're having adults have to take a thousand dollar vice and take responsibility for personal property, which is a little concerning for me. There's not a, like, really clean process around that aspect of that. So like, that's my biggest concern around that. I'd rather it just not be seen or heard at all, and it's put away. But what the benefit you get from that is the meetup, where the kids meet up, they both ask for passes, they meet up somewhere, and then you have a little bit more nonsense then. We've largely not had that. So we've had pretty quiet issues so far this year in our halls and our bathrooms for the most part. And I think that largely does have to do with the cell phone being put away in the classroom, and they can't text each other during the bus to arrange a time meeting.
So is that lower bathroom geneticism in general?
For the most part, I mean, we still have, we have about seven regulars that we deal with pretty consistently. They make up most of our citations for maybe, with officer Megan, they got real issues, we're trying to help them with accounting. But for the most part, like, it's helped immensely in the sense, like, kids do feel engaged. You know, the, the not at all piece, I mean, if you pop by our lunchroom, most kids still don't have their phones out at lunch, even though they're available to them. They're engaging with each other, they're chatting with each other. It's about the easiest lunchroom to supervise I've ever been a part of in twenty-plus years. But there's a handful that certainly do. There's a group of kids that game, they game together on their phones, and that's how they're interacting with each other socially. But it's not created a lot of issues, so.
How about watches, are they, are you getting kids looking at watches when guys come through?
Not asked staff to look, so I don't really have the data on that. I'm, you know, we talked, Bob and I did talk about watches, like, how far would you go with it? I would advise you to dip into your fun, if you want to get serious about that, because at the end of the day, like, you're all going to take a thousand dollar watch, thousand dollar phone. Three hundred dollar AirPods, all handed over to kids by their parents. I'd rather see a policy that tells parents they can't have their kids have it at school than us to be spending all day confiscating those things. And we have kids that have it in their 504s and their IEPs. We've been in the process of trying to address those where we can. But there are existing IEPs and 504s where, say it's allowed. I brought this up before, I'll bring it up again, because you're a new board. But when you eliminate kids having access to a device on a phone, but like, that one kid gets to, now you're saying, oh, there's the one kid that has the medical issue. That's why they're allowed to have their phone. And so like, just to be cognizant of that, where we try to find alternatives further when we can, but a lot of like, the modern diabetes technologies tied into apps and watches and things of that nature. So.
And then we also talk a little bit, AirPods and earbuds to me are a problem, you know, at times. So what does that end up looking like? You know, to me, during instructional time, kids shouldn't have their earbuds. Pat Miles, teaching a class here for six weeks, was like, no, one way, and they always did, you know, so.
Yeah, I think it's about naming the fact that, like, being in a class they shouldn't be in, unless they did in their work time, we're going to say it's okay, but like, you know, how do we want to address that again? Because there's a lot of students that do have that as part of their IEP experience. And some of them use them as noise cancellation, not that they're listening to music.
So that's our primary concern for not calling, just not getting your phones all together.
That's a piece, and I don't think it's the entire piece. So if you, okay, I don't know exactly what a total ban of the devices would look like within the school day. Does that mean they, they got to stay in the car? Does that mean they got to be in their locker? Does that got to be, it's going to be fake? I, I don't know exactly logistically what that looks like. I'm really curious to see, you know, St. Paul is the school district that came out with the cell phone ban here now.
I'm curious how they're going to do it.
And I'm, I'm curious to see how that works. When I was at MSBA, one of the, I went to one of the sessions there, and one of the things was on the cell phone policies. And the model one that they were kind of pouting was by a school, by, it was a kind of lax. And their process was very comparable to what we currently have in place. They too were pleased with it up to this point. They just basically started with this fall. And they, that was coming from kids that they brought in, as well as board members and parents, so. Cell phones are not my favorite deal. I don't like messing with them, I gotta say, they're kind of a problem, but at the same time, they are part of the world. They're, they're, and parts, so.
Yeah, we have standards to say we're supposed to teach around technology and how we use them, but I do think we need, like, clear established policies on like, how we do that. And then, like, if you ban the phones, we still have the watch issue. A lot of the watches can't work independently from phones nowadays, because they have their own data plans. So, like, how far, like, how do you want to write the policy in a way that addresses the full issue, which is the distraction, right? Like, how do you want to cope with that piece? I mean, quite frankly, our Chromebooks, they, I mean, they have access to a lot of stuff on, just through their Chromebooks, they don't need a phone. Like, we address safeguardian issues all the time with kids getting on games and places they shouldn't be getting on as well. I, I think that we need to still spend a lot more time talking about like, how we teach even about technology more responsibly.
I think it's good to consider though, if we have an opportunity to minimize some of that screen time, we probably should take advantage of that. What else would probably result in possible behaviors outside of school? I mean, I don't know if you track how much you're on the phone just individually, but it's probably a lot more than most people think. And if they can learn to go six hours without looking at their phone, it might be a good behavior that you practice outside of school as well. Unless it goes beyond considered.
But we, it's kind of goes back to setting those firm boundaries, really. For yourself with your phone, and others?
I looked at the pouches, like, if you go to like, the Chappelle show and you can't record anything, for us, it would have been twenty-seven thousand dollars to purchase them. And then you have to have a whole process for checking them in and checking them off each day. The schools that I talk to, they assign them, like, they assign Chromebooks, the kids responsible for their own pouch. They come in and sign them in and sign them on each day. I'll tell you, we have kids that we confiscate phones from, and they have burner phones. So they're giving a phone away that's not their real phone, they have an extra one with them, so when they get caught, they're giving their fake one away. And then we catch them again later with another phone. And so, like, I mean, realize that most people nowadays have another phone later on the house. Our kids have brought their extra phones there for them to get on. But, I mean, I could probably say that to Rob, and she probably needs the kids I'm talking to, it's just a handful of kids. Most of our kids, when we tell them the expectation, they follow the rule. That's the bottom line. I mean, ninety percent of our kids have followed the rule. Like, it has helped. We've not had any major conflicts in like, the bathrooms or in the hallways, and I would say cell phones have helped with that. Some other things have helped with that as well. But a lot of times, like, things get stirred up over social media, and that, that's where we, you know, I think the cell phone has, I don't have an access to it. Chromebooks do block that, thankfully. We can't get to social media pages as easily. Some kids have found ways to run that. Created little geniuses, so.
What have you experienced at the middle school? All the same?
Total ban.
We, yeah, I don't put up with it. And if, uh, if a watch becomes an issue, then that is also banned. But if it's just to tell time, I have a clock in every hallway, every classroom. I understand that it's analog versus digital, but we can teach it. First time it's retraining with the student, second time it's a detention, third time a parent has to pick it up every time after that. And I do have seven currently that have to turn them in when they arrive on campus. And if they do a burner phone, then they're in school suspension with you.
See, I think that's what I look for from a leadership standpoint, is some of these teachers don't want to, they just want to teach. They don't want to sit there and make sit the phone and all of them. So I look at it from that standpoint too, to make sure that we create a policy that, you know, is easily enforceable. That everybody can follow easily, rather than, like you said, have one be a little more immediate than the other, another one, you know?
It takes time to get that buy-in though, to have, I mean, the staff have to feel supported. And if you don't want to have that confrontation, that's okay, send me an email, I'll take care of it.
But I think middle school, develop, kids are different at each developmental stage. And I think a policy, the policy we have at the middle school is developmentally appropriate.
We're picking up every phone we get called over. I mean, our teachers are reporting us the issues. I don't feel like, our staff feel like it's a problem. There are, I mean, there are staff that are loose, unfortunately, with like, classroom management, or don't have the same skills around classroom management. And we try to support them, linger with it. And I would all form the policy that is adopted by the school board that tells parents to keep their kids' phone at home for them. I wouldn't be opposed to that, except we don't have paid phones around here. Kids can use our phones though, and you know, that's the aspect of, you know, unless we have like a really clean system of it. Again, I feel like 95% of the kids will follow policy, whatever it is. Um, I think it is working. We pick up phones, we have kids that have detention. Every day there's probably people coming back by fourth hour and want by our conference room, there's kids in there on detention. Usually for phones, sometimes for attendance. So there's a point system for that as well. Tardies and left classes add up in points and detentions for that. So, I mean, they're, they're occurring, they happen, they're helping.
That's just it. This is not a.
One size fits all. Well, it's hard to say, you know, when we went to school was, you didn't have a phone at all and if you needed something, you could put it on the office. And same thing, if you need to be contacted. I think that's maybe a generational perspective, but it did work.
And they would, and Joshua said, they do have access to their emails now, almost all the time. So to me, like parents and stuff like that, because that was, you know, you hear, you hear that type of, you're all about that.
It's a di, it's a different world. I would tell my sixth graders all the time, why do you need a phone? You're 12. Well, so my mom can pick me up. Here I am, my parents picked me up and now I'm your teacher. It's just, it's different. It's different.
That was that call the other day, walking home. There was a parent who had two small children and these are all preschoolers. As they were coming off, she handed each one of them a phone and went off to then talk. That's probably not developmentally a goal.
Right. Well, and I, you know, it's, I think that, that it is a greater community issue. And, um, I think we as the adults and the parents have to reach our breaking point that my kid doesn't talk to me anymore because they're glued to this. And I gotta figure something out. If you really want your two-year-old.
The one thing that I will say to Mr. Pukes' point about, you know, you know, that is one thing that they really don't do is sit there and stare at their phones and whatever. They are talking and interacting in a much better manner than I expected. Because I've seen times where that's exactly what kids do. You know, kids sit along the lockers in the hallway and it's dead quiet because they're all up in their phones. That's not what we see.
Yeah, most of the kids really are just sitting and chatting and talking to each other. There'll be kids that have their phones out, like a handful of them, but they've also not had them out in class. Like again, like most classrooms that we swing by, you don't see them at all. If you don't, some teachers are better than others. And I think that's the part where like when you say like, how can you get a little bit tighter and clearer, like we said, not to be seen or heard, but like the expectation of always gotta be in a backpack or. Kids don't largely use the lockers, just so you know. We're at a point now where like we almost have enough for every kid, um, but we don't really. And so like, how do we remedy that piece if we're going to say that? We do have, uh, I think four kids right now that have to turn their phones into us every day, um, before their day gets started. And those are pieces like where you, you won't know that if you don't see it. And yeah, like at any given moment I walk into a room and I'm like, what is going on here? Like, there's 12 cell phones out. That's an adult issue, not a kid issue. That's, that's an adult issue and now I have to have a conversation with an adult. Because like that was my fear. I was like, are we gonna start like, how do we address the adults in this and professionalism and how do we help, how do we support? Because I told Rob and Mandy the first two weeks of this, respond to every single call. Like you have to go every single time right away. Because it has to be clear that we're supporting it and doing it. I feel like we still get a call every now and then. We don't get a locker in the lead for a phone used to get picked up by a different adult because the kid won't give it to the teacher.
Have you noticed a difference at lunch from last year compared to this year?
Not a fair question. I've never seen such an easy lunchroom to supervise in my life. Like honestly, like it's an easy lunchroom to supervise. The kids have always been really socially good with one another. I, I will say I do feel like I see less cell phones overall, because I do think kids are interacting. We've had kids like anecdotally tell us that like classrooms feel better because they do feel like kids are talking a little bit more. Our 10th graders, like I have a handful of 10th graders I've interacted with this year, and it wasn't about cell phones, but when we were talking, like it was a good reminder. She said to me, well, we don't interact very well with one another because when we were in seventh grade, we were all in different buildings. Like we don't know each other as a class, right? Like they're all roped up in different spaces. And so, they're not used to interacting with one another now that they're in these classes. They're still getting used to that. I think cell phones did kind of impede that the last couple of years and it's improving because of it being a little bit more intentional. And it is a different world where like literally parents are part of the problem. They call their kids during the day. You got kids that are responsible for things that aren't things that I was responsible for as a kid and they're, they're making work calls and phone calls and addressing things via text message during the day as well. Like I see kids pop their phones out and I'll ask them like what they're doing. I've had to change my habits. I have stopped kids in the halls traditionally over the years to make them open up student view of their grades. It's not as easy to ask a kid to stop and open up their Chromebook to show me their grades. Like that was a conversation between halls. Not doing that now. Now I've lost that. Because I don't want to encourage them holding their phone. Have you gotten a lot of pushback from, say, a student that was getting in trouble for having a phone? Did you get much pushback from parents and all that in general? No, um, two were just, you know, my kid's got an IEP or a 504 and I'm like, yep, I'm aware of it, but it was not during time that the 504 accommodates them for a tight piece. And so just a conversation piece. You know, one felt like their kid was being targeted unfairly compared to like other kids and that might be fair. And so, looked into it, but for the large, for the most part, no. But we also didn't have parents complaining about it to us directly the other way either. So, you know, we wanted to honor your request from the board last year that it was a request, and so we looked at it. Certainly we were paying attention to the national stuff. I was already having conversations with Patrick Smith, the principal up in Osseo, who spoke to the legislation last year about this. He just harped on me. The biggest thing is like, if you don't get your staff to all do it, it won't work.
Got to have that buy-in.
Yep. Kind of was the biggest thing. So Bobby made a point to come down at the beginning of our school year too, to say the same thing and reinforce it from a superintendent. And the same point that like everyone's got to do it.
And it's hard at first and it gets easier. I mean, just any change in a classroom or policy as a teacher. It takes some time to teach the kids and scaffold the process, but then once you get through that difficult time, it's better. Do you have your grades tell on each other as well?
Man, they tell on their, they tell on adults too though. I, I made the mistake like two weeks in. I walked into a room and I popped my phone out because I wanted to take some pictures and do some stuff. And I was like, some night, some nightmare building here, violating the policy. It was like, we have to remember that.
It's true. I mean, I leave my phone on my desk almost all the time and I'll come down and want to check my calendar or something. Can't do that.
In some pro that they allow the, the Facebook kids to take phones away from staff if they have their, their phones out, they can record that.
But it, but it, but it is like to the generational piece. So, this is a while ago. I'm not gonna say where or when it was. I, as a younger principal, much younger than I am now, got called into HR. Because a staff member was complaining about me being on my phone in staff meetings. And I opened up my phone and I showed HR my notes that I take during staff meetings on my phone and meeting. Like I've always been a person that doesn't like paper. I want it in a place where I can access it quickly. And so like when you talk about the, the responsible uses of technology, like your perception is different than my perception. I got a kid right now that we're trying to get her permission for an app to talk to her Google classroom. I can't do it through the Chromebook. It's only gonna work through her phone. She's trying to be better organized to stay on top of her homework and her grades. But I'm gonna have to tell her like, you can only do that during lunch or at home, or maybe not at all if the policy changes. Around like looking at her phone with this app that she wants to be in her Google classroom to be more organized. Send you what that app is with the cruise.
Any other questions on that? All right, any other topics? We're gonna go, upcoming meetings, next meeting is, uh, March 24th, Monday night, 5:30. And with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn. Second, all right, uh, motion by Ms. Schoenfelder, second by Ms. Panik, adjourned.
So we have to vote.